Good morning, everyone. I'll call the Crow Wing County Committee of the whole meeting for March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Our first order of business today, well, first of all, there's four commissioners in the boardroom. Commissioner Coring is attending via Teams. And with that, I'll turn it over to Debbie for number one, which is our year-end administrative services report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. This morning, our administrative services team is here to give you our two thousand and twenty year-end report. It seems like there should be only one item on it that's titled COVID- nineteen. But really, we had a lot of other things that happened during the year as well. So we want to give you just an overview of what occurred during two thousand and twenty and some of the highlights and information that we think you might find interesting. Just as a reminder, the structure of administrative services contains our three divisions of finance, facilities, and IT. And in the finance field, it also includes the administration of our countywide elections as well. So you're going to hear a little bit of an update from each of our division leaders, and they will talk about some of the highlights in their divisions. And then I will wrap up with a little bit on the elections from two thousand and twenty, and then we'll have time for any questions that you may have. So our first update is going to come from our facilities department, and our facilities manager, John Melson, will be giving you the information on facilities. Do you want to come up here?
Sure. I got this in case I can't see the screen.
Perfect.
Eyes are getting old.
I brought my cheaters if you need them.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Give you a quick update. We got a lot of slides to cover today and a short amount of time to do it. Stop me at any time if you have questions. I'll pause at the end of each slide also. We're responsible for fifteen buildings, twelve Crow Wing County facilities, and four City of Brainerd. We did add a fourth building for the City of Brainerd this year, which is the library. So that is growing and continues to be beneficial, and I'll talk more about that later. We manage over four hundred and ninety thousand square feet of office and workspace, associated grounds work of over seven hundred thousand. So total, we're in that one point one million square foot of property that we take care of. Three hundred and ninety horsepower of boilers for heating, that's our central plant, nine hundred and eighty tons of chiller and DX for air conditioning. Those are big numbers. You know, you're talking the equivalency of heating and cooling, three to three hundred and fifty individual residences. So we produce a lot of heating and cooling. We deliver eight and a half million gallons of water to the buildings. That's on a weekly basis and an eight-hour day. So in five days and an eight-hour workday, we're pumping eight and a half million gallons of fluid throughout the campus. We operate a fifteen hundred watt generator. That's the equivalent of about two, two hundred and twenty-five homes that we could power. So that's our backup power. This is our, just a budget highlight. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we had a pretty good jump in our budget. That was mostly related to planning for bringing a new contractor in for cleaning and owning the equipment. So we procured our own equipment for facilities to own. This year, our budget increase is about two percent. That is, energy rates have been very stable for the past few years. So that has allowed us to really watch our bottom line and help us manage that a little bit later on, a little tighter budget. I'll get into a little bit of that later. There's some challenges coming there, so. Current budget pressures, obviously, cost of utilities continues to rise, increased cost of materials. In the last six months, copper has gone up twenty-eight percent, steel's gone up twenty-three percent. All those components come together to make our motors and pumps and all those kind of things. So we're going to feel that. So increased cost of service contracts, kind of goes without saying, we always try to negotiate the best deal we can. But labor rates go up, their supplies go up, and so those costs continue to go up. Future budget pressures, natural gas, there's new national directives that will have additional medium-term cost implications. Near term, I think in the next twelve to twenty-four months, we're going to be pretty stable. But our energy suppliers are telling us that two to five years, get ready for some pretty significant transition. And in the five to ten years, we don't know what to tell you yet. So electricity will be also impacted to the upside related to direct the production of natural gas and coal usage. So there's some challenges coming from us there. We do partner with Connect Energy, who has the ability to play the market for us. We can hedge the market. They can buy futures for us. So that's a discussion as things start to go like this that will be happening. So any questions?
So what would be the rationale for the raising natural gas prices to, in a significant manner, not just in a normal?
A reduce in supply. So recently, the current national administration signed a no more leases on federal land for natural gas. That's twelve percent of our natural, of our natural gas production in the United States. So right off the bat, we've got twelve percent less available. So those kind of changes will have an impact on pricing.
Okay.
This is just a quick staffing summary. The industry average is one maintenance tech for every fifty thousand square feet of buildings and grounds. That does not include parking lots and things like that. Our current ratio is as follows, and this includes the City of Brainerd. We have, if you look at two thousand and twenty-one, and it's been pretty stable for the last three years because we haven't added any staff, is about six point five. So we do a good job with fewer people than industry average, in my opinion.
So when they say industry average is five hundred thousand, or what was it, fifty thousand? Fifty thousand. Is that internal or external? So if I'm mowing grass versus cleaning a bunch of bathrooms and hallways?
That's ground, that's, that's building and, and mowing.
Okay.
But not concrete and asphalt and those things.
Okay.
And that's just, we belong to the International Facility Management Association, which is eighteen thousand facilities managers managing, I don't know, sixteen billion square feet. And that's a formula that they've come up with.
Okay.
In addition to all the normal tools that we use, Munis, Excel, all the Microsoft products and other enterprise products that we utilize, here's some facility management systems that are particular to what we do, that we manage. Maintenance Connection, which is our work order preventative maintenance management system. Building Security, not including the jail, Vigilant Security, we manage that server and that software. We have one hundred and six cameras on campus. That's external and internal, not including the jail. There's an additional eighty-eight cameras at the jail, but they manage that. We, we support them and repair them, but that database is all managed by the jail. So this is just the hundred and sixes, campus exterior corridors, things like that.
Including the highway department.
And then hi, this includes highway.
And the outpost climbing center?
We don't have any.
Nothing out there.
Right now. Vigilant Card Management, we run that, all that software. We install, replace, run the server. We have two hundred and eight card readers on campus and at the highway. And a duress system, which is integrated with our video system. So there's eighty-two duress buttons on campus. When someone presses a duress button, down in dispatch, it will automatically pull up the closest three cameras for them that are looking at the area where the button was pushed. So that's something that was put in place about eighteen months ago, and we test it quarterly, and it performs well. Tritium, that's our HVAC and billing automation systems. That's how we run all the heating and cooling and pumping and a lot of other things on campus. And I'll show you a couple screenshots of that. Keystone is our mechanical access control management of keying. We manage all the keys, all the cores for the entire campus and the highway and the other outbuildings. We manage thousands of keys. So having a good software control is, is important. So keys can get out of control really quick. And fleet management. So we made that investment last year in custodial equipment, floor clean equipment, and we also got a fleet management software. So we can log in and see how much runtime is on that equipment, how long the batteries have been charged, and it will report out to us if it sees any weird trends. So just protecting the investment of our equipment there. So. This is just a screenshot of actually this facility. The slide didn't come out exactly like I want. I wanted to show you all the different cameras on the side. But, so this is what we see when we look at cameras. We can pull up any of those hundred and six cameras. And those cameras are multifunction. Some of them have multiple heads on them. So when you think about one hundred and six cameras, it's actually, our views are probably closer to one hundred and forty views because some cameras have multiple lenses that are looking at different directions. Some of our cameras are what we call RPC, which is rotate, pan, and zoom. So they can zoom, they can pan, they can rotate up and down. So that's pretty cool technology. This is one screenshot. This happens to be, this is our Tritium building automation system. This is just of the central plant. You can see there in green what the set points are, and then the other numbers are what is actually happening with the equipment, at what speed it's running, what firing rate, those kind of things. This system, we have access to about five hundred screens. So we can see, yeah, it's, it's massive. But if you think about all, you know, we have forty-two air handlers on campus. We have two hundred and seventy-eight VAVs for individual offices, and we can see all that graphically and operate that. All the pumps in judicial, all those things are on this system.
I think Mr. Hool would tell you that one of the first, when he first came on board, he got a lot of complaints and calls about, it's too hot, it's too cold. We don't get those calls anymore, and part of the reason is because they're monitoring with the system. These guys are able to keep track of it and manage it to the point where nobody's complaining about what the temperature is in their areas.
We, we get alarms. We have alarms in the system, multiple, at multiple points, that we get an alarm before you even know what's happening. You don't even feel the climate change, and we already know something's happening. So a quick, back to energy real quick. We don't got to go back, but energy in the central plant. So in February, when we had that thirty below temperature, so in Texas got walloped really hard. We got the call from Center Point Energy that we had to retreat from natural gas and put the central plant on diesel fuel. So we were in here on a Saturday afternoon making that switch. We were on diesel fuel for forty-eight hours. We burned about four thousand gallons. That's about right, eighty to a hundred gallons, depending on outdoor temperature. But what happened in Texas, so it wasn't a Minnesota problem. What happened in Texas and their ability to deliver natural gas into the pipeline that spreads across the entire country made us have to pull off a natural gas for two days and burn diesel fuel. So what happens twelve hundred miles away can affect us here.
So how much diesel fuel do we keep in stock?
We try to keep about three, we have a ten thousand gallon tank. We try to keep about three thousand gallons because we wanted to rotate. We don't want it to sit there. You know, normally, we don't use much. We got a few pickup trucks, and the highway guys fuel up once in a while when they're doing snow. I core, I, I can see these kind of things coming. I can kind of predict them. When I see it's going to be thirty below for, for four days, I'm going, all right, there's a chance. So then I start talking with the highway department who manages our fuel inventory, and we start coming up with a plan. So we did have to have fuel delivered on a Sunday morning. We had seven thousand gallons delivered to help us get through. And that gets really expensive very quick. It, it burns a, the efficiency of diesel fuel over natural gas is about sixty percent. So it's not the way to go. One last slide here graphically. This is a capital improvement project for this year. This is our, when I say domestic hot water for the jail. This is, people think about hot water heaters. Well, yeah, it kind of is, but that one tank pitcher there in the middle, that's a four hundred and thirty-two gallon hot water tank heated by the central plant, and with central plant can't do it if the demand's too high, those other two water heaters up on the top can take, take over. So there's a lot going on to make, make hot water. This is just another example of what we see. So we processed over thirty-two hundred and thirty-six work orders last year, and here's a breakdown of those. Our actual work order count was down a little bit this year because a lot of our customers went remote, and they weren't calling us for their squeaky desk chair in their desk drawer that wouldn't close. But obviously, our workload pivoted into other areas. The work order count was down, but the amount of time in the work order system was up. So we were still producing. It was just in different areas. So we might have had a COVID work order where five guys were on something for two days, and that was just one work order instead of a whole bunch of individual work orders coming in. So this just shows our ratio for two thousand and twenty of preventative maintenance. Industry says you should be around forty-five percent of your, your maintenance crew should be doing preventative maintenance. This shows that we are at about thirty-five percent for two thousand and twenty, so, which is a pretty stable number. We deliver one million dollars plus in capital improvement projects in the facilities every year. Some key projects for two thousand and twenty. The, a big one was the jail security system replacement. All the doors, the cameras, the speakers, lighting, and some utilities. You know, there's eighty-eight cameras, there's two hundred and fifty speakers, there's three hundred and fifty door locks, which door locks are, you know, they're this big and that wide and this thick, and there's servo motors and micro switches and all kinds of stuff in them. So that was a, a really big project. We had some team players that really stepped up in IT and, and facilities and kept that on track and kept the stress level as low as we could at the jail. So, but things happen. We swiped the car to open a door, and the garage door opened one day. So there's always, when you're doing a technology cutover, there's always those kind of challenges. Central Plant Chiller Two compressor rebuild last year, drain tile pump replacement at Judicial Center. LEC remodel phase two and three was completed this year. Some challenges happened there, but we got through it. And the jail BAS HVAC smoke control system replacement has just wrapped up. So that was a technical challenge. City of Brainerd is committed to continuing shared services agreement for two thousand and twenty-one, including addition of grounds. Building maintenance at the library agreed to in early two thousand and twenty. We negotiate that every year. We sit down and talk about what we're doing. Were we coming up short? Are you happy with us? How many hours are we utilizing versus what we projected? And that kind of discussion. And then we come up with a summary and an agreement to go for another year.
We still have yet to come up with a normal year with our contract with the City of Brainerd. When we first entered into the agreement, they were in the process of starting their remodel phasing over at City Hall. So we were not really fully vested in what would be the day-to-day work there beyond the grounds maintenance and some of the things in that realm. And then two thousand and twenty, COVID, we did not have a lot of people in our buildings. Neither did they. They had a lot of people who were working remotely. Part of the conversation was to continue to find value add on both sides of this contract. What's the give and take that needs to look at? Hence, part of the conversation that John and the city had was to potentially include the City of Brainerd with the library to see what kind of load, if you will, that would add to our workload and still provide value on both sides. So far, I think we can say it's been working pretty well.
Yes. So that's a, that's a moving target as of now, but we're getting closer and closer to figuring out what that actual number is. But I think if you'll talk with any of the building heads at the City of Brainerd, you'll find that they're extremely pleased with the service that we're providing.
Good to know.
This is my last slide, just a quick COVID nineteen in facilities, how we had to pivot and some of the things we had to do. We procured three hundred and thirty-one pieces and installed Plexiglas. That was about sixteen hundred square feet. Custom tempered glass at nine different locations, about five hundred and twenty square feet. CIP projects, there was a forty-five percent funding freeze at the onset of COVID, which required us to do quite a bit of pivoting and come up with contingency plans should those planned projects actually experience a failure. We increased custodial services. We added a day porter service five days a week. Purchased and distributed additional cleaning sanitizing products. We used a technology through our new custodial contractor that was not available with our previous contractor called electrostatic discharge cleaning in areas of community services and land services where we had confirmed COVID cases. So that's a, a, a atomized sterilizer that is electrically charged. So everything in a facility is in a, in a negative, and they electrically charged that atomized material. It was a positive. And it just, instead of spraying it, just, you can spray it here, and it's just going to go to whatever feels is negatively charged. And it's a, it's a chlorine base. So pretty effective, pretty cool. Customer traffic flow management, obviously. We assisted in planning and prep for reentry of customers. Purchased and distributed social distancing signs, floor stickers, and stanchions. And the bottom one is HVAC. We increased the building air-to-air exchanges for CDC, IFMA, and ashtray guidelines. We brought in as much fresh air as the facility as we could. We ran air handlers for longer periods of time than we normally do just to continual flush and keep turbulence in the air. The more turbulence you could keep in the air and the more fresh air you could build in the, in the facility, CDC and everybody else said that's, that's the way to go.
So under your CIP, did any of your planned projects fail?
No, but we ran some of our inventories down to uncomfortable levels, I would say. But the projects that made me sleep with one eye open a couple nights, did not, we made it through. So.
Okay. It's a dangerous bet, but.
Yeah, it was a little scary, but, but we managed.
Okay.
We had contingencies we had put in place in case we were. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can, John, you're getting back to utility costs. And you talk about, you know, the increase that we're going to see over the next years. Is there any options for alternative that we should be looking at or talking about?
So, yeah, so my predecessor actually explored wind and solar a little bit. And at that time, that was probably five years ago. It just wasn't financially feasible to do. I believe as we move forward, that is going to have to come back on the table. We have a lot of roof here. We have hundreds of thousands of square feet of open roof. And if, if solar is an option, we also have a hillside, right, behind Land Services and down there, so, that faces to the south, perfect face. So yes, we will be looking at that. Actually, our energy partner, Connect Energy, has reached out to me, and they have, they have some ideas they'd like to talk to us about. So, so there, there's opportunities for solar. I don't think we're there financially where it makes sense, but it's probably time to start having those discussions again.
Okay.
Any other questions for John?
Only one statement to make, and I want you to relay this to your staff, that we appreciate everything that they did this year to get us through this. Appreciate their commitment and the knowledge and skills that they provided for the county. They did an excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Steve, I've got a question.
Oops.
Paul, go ahead.
Deborah, you done with your, this is a question to you, and I guess it's kind of a question to you and Tim Hool. And I'm surprised I didn't forget the question because it was at the very beginning, and, and I waited until he would, John was all done. But going back to your org chart, can you put that back up, the very first slide you had on there? So I guess just, just, I don't know, this is just a question that popped into my head when I, when I looked at this. Okay, so if you remember in the past, when the board was, was, it was a different board. The board did hire the IT manager, and the board did hire, hire the finance manager, the county board did. So in looking at this org chart, if, if those two positions or facilities changed or the senior, senior tech administration specialist, it, it almost seems like you would be in charge of hiring those positions. Do you think that that's the way, is that the way I'm reading it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Coring, yes, that is the way you're reading it, and that is kind of the structure that we've put in place now. When the board hired the IT manager and the finance manager before, we didn't have the administrative services structure at that point in time.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, no, that's it. No.
So then, Mr. Chair, we, our next update is from our IT department. And Jay Sikkink, our IT manager, will provide the overview of what occurred in IT in two thousand and twenty.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thanks, Debbie. This is a updated slide from last year. We've had some more tablets and iPhones and stuff because of, of the pandemic last year. More people were working with laptops versus desktops, those type of things. But as you can see, we, we support a lot of different devices. And we have two data centers now. We have, we have one in the bottom of the law enforcement center, and we're distributing that workload across. And we have a hundred and thirty-four servers. So you think about, you know, you've probably seen some emails about the Microsoft Exchange stuff going on from this last year. And it's very important for us to keep all those laptops and all those servers current with all the patches and updates so all these vulnerabilities don't get to our system. So it's just a big job in general, just keeping that stuff secure and updated. So I, I have my COVID responses by, basically my first slide, obviously because it was a huge thing for IT last year. We actually started in January. I started with my team. We have weekly meetings. I said, you know, if, if, if whatever hits the fan, how are we going to support the county, you know, what, what should we be looking at? And we did that. We called a lot of our vendors, like the, the phone company, okay, when we have to reroute phone calls, what does that do to our trunk lines coming in and out? And how fast can you enhance the capacity or, or remote access or VPN, all those things? We started having those conversations back in January, February, and we actually had quotes in hand, which I think has saved us a lot because other people, if you went to the vendor, they, it took them like two weeks just to get a quote because those guys were working seven by twenty-four getting quotes. We had quotes in hand. We could just say, okay, we need this. And so we were, we were pretty lucky that we had those things in place. As you can see, we rolled out Teams, which we use consistently now throughout the county. We were scheduled to do that in August. We rolled that out in three days. Normally, it takes three months. And I think that really helped the county continue their business. We reallocated a lot of our inventory. We had some old laptops we had for spares, and all of a sudden, boom, you got a laptop I can use. Well, we got an old one sitting here. It'll work, but it's not the best, but it made people, they could get by, right? So, so we did do that. We increased the phone, capacity in the phone system. We saw a lot more people using, instead of desktop phones, using their computer as a phone. So we saw those things. And obviously, there was huge changes in this room, right? And that seemed to change weekly for us too, because first of all, we didn't let the public in, and we need to have public access through Teams. We streamed things, and we saw just our whole public access and meetings changed dramatically over months. And, and a lot of times, that changed from meeting to meeting, right? And then we also saw not just your meeting, but some of the other planning meetings and those type of things use the same facility. So that, that was huge.
Three hundred and sixty-six days ago, a year ago yesterday, was a Sunday afternoon, and we were sitting in the EOC Center. And Commissioner Coring may remember this as well. We were sitting in the EOC Center saying, what are we going to do and how are we going to handle this situation with our employees? We need to get them out of the building now. Jay and his team, I was on the phone with them that afternoon, and within about a one-hour period, we had increased our capacity on our VPN to be able to have more people working from home. We had increased the capacity of our phones to be able to manage to route incoming calls and outgoing calls so that we could serve our customers. And by Monday morning, we could literally say people who have the ability to work from home should stay home and work from home. There are some of our counterparts, counties across the state, who are still not in that level of preparedness. And like Jay mentioned, because our team had started seeing this coming down the road and planning ahead, we were basically able to make that shift in a one-afternoon timeframe. So I, I really want to give acknowledgement to the team and the work that they did for that purpose of getting us to that point.
Probably the very first bullet item up there too, the, we, we have weekly, and then you guys know, things change weekly, then they change daily, and then they started changing hourly. So we, we actually started meeting every morning and saying, what's changed, what's changed from yesterday? And so we. And so we could adapt to what was changing in the county. And we've continued that practice for the entire year. We now, every day, we have a stand-up meeting. Sometimes they last five minutes, sometimes they last thirty minutes, but we, we can react to everything. Completed work orders, you can see our work order is going to continue to climb. We did seventy-six hundred work orders in 2020. As you can see, the graph keeps going up. Our activity keeps increasing in our department, so...
Is the, just back on that for a second, the seven thousand, is that related to us board members and the six hundred to the other staff?
Well, you're about ninety percent of that.
Ninety percent.
This shows you, this shows who's the culprits, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. So this is my department, so this gives you the, yeah. You guys, you just, see, only had ten for you there in that one, so. And then, I think that we're pretty proud of this fact, of the seventy-six hundred cases that we had last year. We have a service-level agreement we have with the county. It's on our SharePoint site. We say if you call in, we're going to try and get back to you in X amount of time, and then we're also going to resolve it in X amount of time, right? Depending on the severity and the priority of the call. And we met that ninety-nine point six-six percent of the time last year. Now, put that in perspective, a few years back, we had Marco as a, that did a lot of our support for us. Their goal was eighty-five percent, and they usually were in the high seventies, low eighties for their SLA. So we're meeting that almost a hundred percent of the time. I threw this up every year, just kind of put things for security and stuff. We have a email filtering, so email coming in, we look at it, we have some technology to look at. Row is the average, so we get about five hundred thousand emails a month. And as you can see, toward, on the right side there, about seventy-one percent of them are spam. So we just dropped that, you know, and which, which really, when you think about it, is a waste of time for employees when all the spam stuff comes in, right? But even, I looked at January, and it's like, holy cow, is that crazy or what? One point two million emails came in last January, and almost ninety percent of them are spam. And you can see, there's some with virus and phishing attacks and those type of things in there too. Average phishing attacks are six hundred a month that come in.
Beyond what we test on.
Beyond, yeah. And that's the ones we catch.
Yeah.
I'm always worried about the ones we don't catch, right? Because technology, no, no technology is going to get a hundred percent of them. Which leads me to this slide. We did a test, that was kind of sneaky, in twenty nineteen, where I put a test out to see how many people would, would actually not see it. And you ran over a link that said, it was at Old McDonald's, they had a fish farm. And we thought it was really obvious, and still thirty-three percent of the employees clicked on it the first time, right? So then we did some training of the employees, and then we were down to like thirteen to fifteen percent. And we really couldn't get that number down. So last year, you guys probably see it, right? We do a weekly test. So we get, we get a weekly test that goes out and it's random. And there, the first part of last year was more just COVID tests, they were focused on COVID. And you can see the numbers came down. And then about August, we increased it where we did more of a wider variety of tests, and then our numbers went up. And so you can see, it went up for a little bit, now they're starting to come down again. But we're at four point seven percent of the time, people click on things. Industry standard for government is four point four, so we're still a little bit high, but we're getting there, so. And it, and it also does is take one test, right? One person, and...
Big improvement. And any email I get from Jay, I just delete that right away.
That's, that's good thinking. I do get a little bit of pushback on that once in a while, but I tell the people, I said, you don't, you don't want to be the one that clicks, clicks on stuff and it costs the county a million dollars to get our data back, so.
Right.
You don't want to be that person, so. GIS, we haven't talked much about that in previous years on this report, but you can see, very successful with the mapping, and we're seeing a lot more mobile usage than just the website. A lot of people are just using on their phones and stuff, so. And that, that's where you go out and get property information and all that stuff in the GIS. And I don't know, if you guys go out there, that's, it's really cool what you can get, information you can get on your property or whatever. Another thing that we worked on, snow removal map. Tim was back here, you could probably tell him more, more about it than I can. But, yeah, we, you know, we did a lot of stuff with the snowplow information and getting that out and having an app. And there was a couple people in my staff worked on that, but that's one of the highlights of this year, that snow removal information that went on. And we also implemented GIS Hub. We put this on our website. We feel that the information from the GIS system is more accessible and easier to find now for the consumer. A lot of stuff is out there. We can put applications out there easier by using the hub technology. And also, we went, in twenty nineteen, we went to Open Data, it's called Open Data. We used to charge for our data. Now we just put it out there and people are using it. And like Minnesota Power uses our data to do their, their stuff when they're working in the field. And we see a lot of engineering companies use that stuff, and it's, you know, the data that's useful for them to get their job, and they can be more efficient. And it used to cost us a lot of money, a lot of red tape to, okay, you had to fill out a form, you had to do this, we had to charge you and everything else. It really wasn't cost-effective, you know? It was probably more overhead than what we pulled in, so. This is another area we haven't talked about. We have a business intelligence person. And what he does is he goes out and gets, you know, he's the one that takes data and makes sense out of the data, right? So we can make better decisions here at the county. And here's just a few things. Well, he supports twenty-three ClickSense applications. That's a tool that we use for the analytics. And you can see, maybe the next slide will tell us more here for him. So here's, here's an example of some of the things we're doing with it. And again, I got T-bleepers in here too. Karen's not here anymore. But court services, we pull information from different systems, and then we look at people that are in the court systems and what's their rate of recidivism, right? And we can look at it by gender or by age group or any, any of the demographics that you're looking at, so they can look at that and say, well, how can we prevent that or how can we change things to make things better? And there's, I won't go through the whole list here because we don't have a lot of time, but this is such an improvement. You know, I hear people when they come talk to me that I spend three days a month gathering information to give a report to, to either state or to board or wherever. And it's like, three, that's thirty-six days a year, you know, just to get information out. If I can take my team and spend a week or two getting that data, and then it takes them ten minutes or fifteen minutes, but it's three days to do it a month, I mean, that's a definite cost-saving, so.
There's no point in collecting data if we're not going to be able to utilize the data to provide it for decision-making purposes. And because we do have so many different systems that we collect the data in, having that ability to mine it and report it in a usable format is huge.
Yep. Because we take it from different systems. I have a gentleman in staff, he, he can take just about any data and figure it out. So it's, it's really amazing what he can do. Website, I think this is kind of surprising. The website overall last year dropped. We saw previously a steady incline, and then last year, it dropped a little bit. Not exactly sure what the cause of that is. We saw mobile traffic down a little bit. And then also, if people had the in-custody bookmarked, and we changed the URL, they had to change their favorites, you know, so it was a little bit maybe harder to find or they had to go find a different route, because that was usually our biggest hit on our system. So you can see here, we still, mobile is still higher than desktop. I think it was about four years ago, it switched. We used to do desktop, and we actually changed our website all around to accommodate the mobile traffic, because people are using mobile devices than just, just a desktop. And you can see, land, land is really high, and in custody is high, and any property stuff is really high by what people are searching for. And then our social media presence has increased though. That's, that's a change, where you can see the big increases here. You can see the, a lot of them are up like twenty-four, sixty-seven percent, you know, the huge percentage increase in social media, which I think that's a telling sell sign of the times, right?
And our YouTube presence went from basically non-existent to now we have almost everything out on YouTube. So definitely an increase in that realm.
We do customer surveys. We had two thousand last year and almost a ninety-nine percent satisfaction rate. I would, I'd like to say that was higher because sometimes I get a call, I follow up if we get a negative one, and I just had one last week, and I thought, oh, I did it backwards. I rated you a one, I meant four, and four was good, you know, so it got backwards. But again, industry averages is closer down or under ninety percent, and we're almost at a hundred percent satisfaction with seven thousand tickets, so I'm pretty proud of our team.
It does show though, seven thousand work orders that you have and only two thousand respondents.
Correct.
Is...
That's actually pretty high for the county.
Is that pretty high?
Yeah. We don't get, not, every time you do take it, not everyone fills out a survey.
So all I do is say, Jason is great, Mathias is great.
Perfect. That's what we like to see.
So I will say to you also, your staff have been phenomenal in the past year.
Thank you.
Just saw Jason the other day at Shields, he was looking for me down in St. Cloud. Always responding quickly and solving the problem. So I have three different ways I can get my emails now from the county on my personal laptop at home. Just amazing.
Yeah, I mean, it's a team approach too. I mean, I have amazing staff, and I have to say it is a team approach, so.
So, but internally, what they did here to facilitate the changes that needed to be made in that short period of time was phenomenal.
Thank you.
Be sure and thank every one of them for their efforts. And I'm sure it's ongoing because you guys, you have a perfect world, your job will never go away.
Any questions for Jay?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jay.
Then our next update is going to be Nick from our finance update.
I'm going to try and speak into the mic because I know I'm usually quieter. I get the pleasure of being here once a month and going through the finance. We're going to try and go through some things that we don't normally talk about. We do talk about budget frequently, but I wanted to highlight some pieces here. For our budget schedule, we start our budgets in March and April, specifically the CIP in April, and we take that all the way through the end of the year. Some years, we're lucky enough to be prepared and have everything put together that our preliminary in September is actually our final for December, and the work is, for the most part, complete by September. Other years, we take it to the very end. So it occupies a lot of time for our department to run through the budget process. In there, we have four major funds. Within that, we have seven distinct divisions or departments, and underneath that are multiple divisions that progress further down into the weeds. That creates two thousand four hundred ninety-five organ object codes that we budget just for the levy portion of our budget. There's more than the two thousand four ninety-five because we have the landfill, we have solid waste, we have other departments that aren't levy-based that don't fall into that normal budgeting cycle for us. We also budget for the First and Second Assessment District in that too. Some high-level reports for payroll and accounting. Our average number of payroll checks since 2018 has steadily increased. A lot of this is a result of us taking on AIS and other temporary staff throughout these time periods, specifically in 2020. The temporary staff that we needed for elections helped drive up that number of checks that went out per payroll. You'll see, we also handle the purchase card transactions out of pocket. These are a little out of order, but out of pocket, you can see that that's had a significant decrease in 2020. We weren't traveling, we weren't going to trainings, we weren't doing those types of things. So our out-of-pocket expenses and transactions decreased significantly for 2020. As time comes back and the world has changed, that we might do a lot more things remote, a lot more trainings remotely, this may start to be kind of the trend for us. You also see that on the purchase card transaction side, we had a significant decrease there as well. Oh, not significant, it's, looks big. We still had a significant number of transactions going through the AP, or through our purchase card. This was during the CARES time, we were using the credit cards to purchase computers and other things to make that process quickly so we could get it in a timely fashion. AP transactions also increased. A big driver here, again, was CARES. Not only the equipment and everything else that we had to purchase, but also the payments that we made for the grants as well drove up that AP transaction list.
So all of those grant payments would show up as an AP transaction, so that was everything through December thirty-first of 2020.
Yep.
Which is why there's quite a big jump in that particular year.
We'll stick to the right side on this one. For W twos, again, having all those temporary staff, that drove up the number of W twos that we had to issue to employees. We went from five ninety-six to six hundred and thirty from nineteen to twenty. The ten ninety-nines, the biggest driver there are the grants. We had to issue a ten ninety-nine for every grant recipient because they got over six hundred dollars. So we had to issue four hundred and sixty-four ten ninety-nines this year compared to our normal of around two hundred. So we, a little more than doubled the number of ten ninety-nines we had to issue for 2020. On the settlement side, you can see that property taxes continue to climb, so our settlement that we distribute, we collect the seller, the property tax for all the local school districts, the local municipalities, including cities and townships. We collect that all, and then we have to distribute that. That is mostly handled by the Tyler product, but there is a lot of manual labor and effort that goes into that still to make sure those reports are accurate and that it gives the information the local municipalities need to apply that money appropriately. So we had a hundred twenty-five million that we settled out in 2020. Screen, got to catch up. We also manage investments in cash. For the investment side, we have eighteen CDs that actually matured in 2020 or were called. We actually had one that Wells Fargo called back. They did not want to leave it out there. I think interest rates dropped enough, they went, let's take advantage of this and get rid of these. We had four point five one eight million that were matured or settled. So that came into our cash flows. We did not, at the time, reinvest those. We are going to continue to monitor what interest rates are and probably look at reinvesting some of those as our fund balances and unrestricted cash flows improve over the coming years. We still have five CDs that are invested through a system called Quick Rate. We no longer utilize this system, but we still have the five CDs sitting out there for nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. All of those will be matured by, I believe it's 2024 is when the last one will mature. We also have two CDs that are invested with Bremmer for five million dollars. One is actually maturing next month. That one will be turned around and reinvested again. Both of these are in short-term CDs, just to allow us to navigate the COVID pandemic and hopefully watch interest rates start to climb back up again. We also manage the Bremmer Trust. There's twenty-four million in there. These are restricted and committed funds that we aren't able to touch, but we are able to invest them. So we have twenty-four million dollars that are invested in the trust. These are mostly for landfill and solid waste, with a little bit of public land management in there, I believe, as well. We also have a few different accounts with Bremmer that handle our day-to-day transactions. We have a money market savings account. This is where we hold the majority of our money as it earns interest while it sits. Our average balance for 2020 was just over twenty-seven million. This fluctuates all the way from the seventy million mark down to, I believe our lowest last year was around three million, sitting in that account. This is something that we manage daily to make sure that we have the cash we need to deliver our operations. The DVA is our disbursement account. The average balance is three point four million in there. The only time money has moved in there is when we do an AP batch, we move the money over to that, so it's available when somebody goes to cash to check. So we like to see that number on the lower end so that we know these things are getting cleared and processed quickly. We moved over two hundred and twenty million dollars through that disbursement account in 2020, and that's managed daily by our staff. The tax settlement to the county, township, city, school district, et cetera, this is just kind of a breakdown of the months, what they look like. July is our biggest settlement. We did a little over seventy million dollars for a settlement in July. December, we did a little over fifty-two million. And in January, it was just slightly under two point five million. The January is the closeout for the prior year. So that's us settling out whatever we collected through the end of 2020, or 2019, in 2020. Reporting and audits, we complete a comprehensive annual financial report, is a hundred and sixty-four pages. It is the complete financials and statistical analysis.
And we know you've all read every page, every year.
I'm sure everybody has. That is, last year was our first year that we completed that in-house with the staff that we currently have. We did have a year where we had CLA assist us. Prior to that, staff... Prior to that, staff was doing that, but with the turnover, we didn't have the knowledge and the experience there to do that. So we did produce that ourselves last year. We also produced the popular annual financial report. That's eight pages. It's a quick summary of the comprehensive. We also have the budget book. That was updated and done internally, again, for the first time last year by the current staff. That did have a break two of one year where we built that skill set. It's six hundred and nineteen pages, another one that I'm sure everybody's reading. We do have an advantage. The one that's going to be coming out for the 2021 cycle is down to about two hundred and ten pages, I believe she said. So we did narrow that down a lot to be more specific to what is important to not only our constituents and you, but also to the Government Financial Officers Association as well.
So before you move on from that, the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, does have a financial reporting awards that Crow Wing County has been recipient of in the past, both for the comprehensive annual financial report, the popular annual financial report, and the budget book. And we have received the award for the 2019 budget book. We were just informed of that recently, that that six hundred and nineteen-page document did qualify for that. There are some additional changes that are occurring for that particular process in 2021, for the 2020 budget book process, that we believe we will be able to qualify for that award again. I found out last summer that we are one of the very few counties in the state who actually put together the budget document like what we do. Many of the other counties just have a real brief summary of what that budget is. There's a lot of work that goes into preparing that budget document to the specifications of the GFOA, and staff puts a lot of time in making sure that that is there. While six hundred and nineteen pages might seem like it's overkill, it does provide that transparency in government for whoever is wondering, how are my tax dollars being spent? It does break down all of the detail that goes along with everything. So it is a well-worth-it effort.
Bill would like a copy of that.
It's available on our website for anyone who would like to take a look at it.
Yes. For, actually, for all three of these, we did receive the award from GFOA for our comprehensive, our popular, and our budget book. And again, that was the first time that this staff was able to produce that. None of us having produced these reports prior. So being able to get that award is pretty special for my staff and our department.
I think it's something to be very proud of.
We're currently in the audit cycle for 2020's year-end. We did have one day where the auditors were onsite in January. Two days in February. They will be back for a full week in May. This is just the time that they have dedicated directly to us. We are in nearly daily contact with them throughout this entire process, providing thousands upon thousands of documents to support their audit. One day, I'm actually going to go through and count how many documents we provide to them because I'm very curious to see if it tops that ten thousand mark, because it feels like it tops ten thousand documents we provide to them. We also support the election side. Debbie will go into a lot more detail with that. We did add the presidential primary. Our staff, Cory, Emily, and I had to also support that process. To some extent, it wasn't as taxing as the general election was, but it did involve some of our staff time there. We did see that we had to increase our temporary staff. We discussed that with the payroll side. For the general election, we doubled our absentee and mail-in ballots. I believe it was about twelve thousand ballots we processed in the prior year?
Yeah.
And then just about twenty-five thousand ballots that we processed this year. That was accomplished with Cory, Emily, and myself, and then we did get some assistance from some temporary staff throughout that process. We spent the full two weeks that we could open and process all of that, processing that. That's about the extent of what we were able to do day-to-day. We did keep up with our normal financial work, but that was the primary purpose for those two weeks. Overall, we spent well over four hundred hours dedicated to elections. That includes Kathy's time, and I probably undershot it a little bit when I look at Kathy's time because she did have the opportunity, or have to help support Debbie in getting the remote drop-offs to get the new processes in place to handle that mail-in balloting system, to train staff and all the temporary staff that we brought in. So there's a lot of effort that was put in. On top of that, we had the CARES Act. We processed over six million dollars in CARES Act payments. That's including the grants and internal expenses that we allocated. This involved brand-new reporting metrics for us. It involved constantly trying to watch what the federal and state were deciding the guidance was going to be from day-to-day and week-to-week, and trying to modify to that, including reporting structure changing. They had one month where they said, here's how we want your report. The next month, they said, never mind that, we're gonna redo this all completely, start over. So we managed through that fairly well, and it was fun. We'll say fun. We did spend that last week for the for-profit, nonprofit grants. Our entire staff was dedicated to processing those payments. We did have to review all of the W-9s that they submitted, all the supporting documentation they submitted, their application, their grant agreement, to make sure that all those pieces were in place before we could issue the checks. And then to make these payments, we had to manually enter each individual person, including their EIN, their addresses, and everything else. And that includes the Minnesota Economic Grant that we're doing now. This is a manual process. These are one-time pays, so we're not able to put them all as brand-new vendors. We set them up each time we write a check. So it's very time-consuming. Some of the systems and programs that we manage, the little chart to the right there is just a fun one that we have hanging on the walls all over downstairs because we keep modifying it to try and figure out how credit cards process through our system and how that impacts all of the different systems we have. This is the latest one we developed as we work to update our credit card processing system. This is trying to help guide them as to how the system communicates across the table. We also manage munis.
I've got a question on that. So when, if somebody calls in and they want to pay their property taxes, do we charge for them to use their credit card? Because if we don't, that could wind up being thousands and thousands of dollars.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Coring, by law, we cannot absorb credit card fees for the tax payments. So for a property tax payment, a deed tax payment, a mortgage registration tax, any kind of a tax, if a customer wants to use their credit card to pay that particular portion of their bill, they have to absorb that fee themselves. So that is a two-point-three-five percent service charge, I believe, is what it costs right now for a credit card transaction for a property tax payment.
So we are clawback that portion of it?
Correct. We are charging that to the customer. For any other type of, of credit card payment, if they are getting a birth certificate, if they are paying for a permit, we absorb the fees for those types of transactions. There is no additional cost for a customer to use a credit card to pay those, but the law does not allow us to do so for a tax payment. So the customer has to absorb those fees, just for basically that exact purpose, that it could be thousands of dollars in fees based on credit card transactions for those.
That sounds good. Thank you. And that's the word of the day, clawback.
Clawback. I like that word.
You can look at the list of all the different programs we have managed there. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Again, thank you for everything that you guys do in your department. It's a stressful area, let's see.
As Nick said, the CARES Act guidance was changing pretty much hourly as we were going through that with some very tight deadlines and timeframes. And the team put in a lot of time, and Nick personally put in a lot of time and effort to try to track what was going on with that, to make sure that we can get those dollars out the door as quickly as possible.
Pretty frustrating when we don't get the directions ahead of time.
That is the name of the game, usually, when you're dealing with state and federal processes.
All right.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
And then finally, I wanted to give just a real brief update on the elections overview. As we've touched on before, this was the first year that we had the presidential primary election as well. So we had three statewide elections that were processed, as well as the annual township elections for those townships who still contain their March election process as well. The presidential nomination primary was that unknown that we were going through because we haven't been through one since the early nineties was the last time this process went on. So nobody really knew what was going to happen. Actually, we were very impressed, if you will, to see that we had a fifteen percent turnout in Crow Wing County for that particular election. If you recall the presidential nomination primary, you had to declare which party's ballot you wanted to receive when you voted. So there is that Minnesota angst of not wanting anybody to know which party you are voting for. It did keep some people away from the polls. We heard that anecdotally. But we still had seven thousand six hundred and twenty-nine total voters who showed up for that particular election. Of the fifteen percent of our eligible voters who voted, twenty-three percent of them voted early or by mail, based on what their choice was or where they lived in a particular precinct. The whole discussion around the presidential nomination primary, when it was first put into law, was that it would be at no cost to the counties. There would not be an expense piece that would be, it would not be a quote "unfunded mandate" that counties had to run on behalf of the political parties. Our total reimbursable costs in Crow Wing County were about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. This did include a little bit of costs from some of the local municipalities who had some costs that were reimbursable as well. But what's left out of that is permanent staff time. My time, Kathy's time, Lisa's time, all of our finance team's time. Everybody in Crow Wing County who was permanent staff, who worked on the presidential nomination primary, our regular hours were not reimbursable. We could reimburse for overtime, we could reimburse for temporary employees. We could not get reimbursed for our actual time that was spent. That was about another twelve thousand dollars that was included in what that cost would have been. So the total cost of the PMP was about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And I love the per-ballot breakdown. I don't know if it's a good measure or not, but I always like to see what that means. The cost per ballot for the presidential nomination primary was about seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents per ballot. Now, that is still better than what we've seen sometimes in primary elections before, but that is what that per-ballot cost was. You've heard me say before that we annually train about five hundred election judges to serve across Crow Wing County precincts in a typical election year. And you've also heard me say that the statewide average age of election judges is about seventy-two years old.
Can I just stop you a second? We did get the hundred and thirty-one thousand?
We did get the hundred and thirty-one thousand, yes.
What we don't get is the capacity that was taken away from our staff to do their regular job.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. We don't get that quantity of that twelve thousand dollars, if you will, for what other duties and tasks employees could have been working on at that time. Yes.
So there was an unfunded portion to it.
There was an unfunded portion of it. Yes, there was. Statewide average age of election judges is seventy-two years old, and what a lot of our precincts heard this year was that they did have some election judges who were concerned about serving in the polling place given COVID-19 considerations. As such, in 2020, we trained about two hundred and twenty-five judges instead of five hundred judges, and we trained them all remotely. Typically, we have a week's worth of in-person trainings that we do. We did a virtual online training this year. We have been using it for refresher trainings for our judges over the past several years. This year, all of our trainings were conducted virtually online, which worked very well. We did hear some good feedback from our judges who did use that process. As Nick alluded to, we also utilized a larger part-time pool of employees. We needed additional absentee voting assistance at the counter with a number of people who were coming in to vote on a regular basis and to get ballots out in the mail. And we needed additional election judges for our absentee and mail ballot processing and our drive-through dropbox that we had as well. We did not have any unmanned dropboxes for absentee ballots in Crow Wing County. What we did have was a drive-through option during regular business hours where voters could drop off their ballots, and we did have that staffed with election judges that full-time. We also have to use, we used a part-time pool of our employees to assist with our testing and auditing of our elections' equipment. All equipment has to go through three phases of testing before it can even head to the polling place on election day. Has to have preliminary testing that's done. It first has to have acceptance testing by our staff when the media arrives. We have to do our preliminary testing. We have to do our public accuracy testing, which also involves the addition of election judges and is open to the public. And then following the election, random precincts have to have a post-election audit, which is a hand count of all the ballots in a couple of different precincts to determine that the results were recorded exactly as they were marked on the paper ballots, which our hand audit reflected an exact count based on what was counted by the election judges at that point in time. Crow Wing County has sixty-two precincts and about just over forty thousand registered voters. In 2018, we had forty-two polling places and eight precincts who had voted exclusively, that should be eighteen precincts, who voted exclusively by mail. In 2020, we had twenty-seven polling places and twenty-nine precincts voted exclusively by mail. And this was because we had eleven additional precincts who switched to voting mail only for the 2020 elections due to COVID-19 considerations. Whether that be their polling location was not large enough for them to accommodate social distancing, whether they were not able to procure enough election judges to serve in the polling place, or whatever the concerns that the township board or city council had at that particular time. So given that situation, we had sixteen thousand-plus voters who were mail precinct-only for 2020, or about forty percent of our registered voters voted exclusively by mail. Additionally, the city of Brainerd combined their polling places, again, due to the fact that a couple of their polling locations were in facilities that were not available to them. They have one at the senior center. They have one at one of the care centers that were not available in 2020 and other areas that were not large enough to accommodate social distancing. So for their nine precincts that they typically vote at eight polling places, their nine precincts now voted at four polling places. These were larger locations, better parking, better opportunity to social distance. They were able to have segregated areas for each precinct within those polling places, and all anecdotal evidence indicated that those worked well for them in this particular year. So a little bit of a budget comparison of what it cost us in 2020 versus 2018. One thing to keep in mind, 2018 being a quote "non-presidential" year, we always see a little bit of a lower turnout, but the cost to run an election is always about the same. The expenses that you can see in 2020, total expense of three nineteen, six ninety. In 2020, five thirty-four, two thirty-two. Biggest differences here, the drivers were in personnel services. You can see we added about a hundred thousand dollars there. That was mainly around our overtime and temporary staff that were involved and the need for additional processing time here. Obviously, our postage was significantly higher in 2020 than it was in 2018, and that is due to all the cost of mailing the mail and absentee ballots. We are required by law to pay outgoing as well as return postage. So even people who chose to drop their ballots off at our ballot drop-off or bring it in person, we still had to pay for the return postage on those when they were sent out. Software services of ninety-seven thousand. The additional there is the impact of the countywide, of having a third countywide election. We had to program the equipment for additional presidential nomination primary. And because that was a party-specific or partisan primary, we had double the amount of programming that had to go into that process because it had additional requirements that needed to be taken into consideration because there were additional ballot styles that were required. We also had additional increases in supplies and materials, basically, again, due to the amount of ballots and consumable supplies that had to be procured. Presidential nomination primary, we basically had doubled the cost of the ballots because we had to have both-party ballots printed and available, depending on which parties people chose to have. Additionally, in the general election, what we found was we had to order increased amounts of ballots than what we typically would have done. With all the people who were voting in mail ballot-only precincts, there was a lot of misinformation that was out in the community. There was a lot of people who chose to want to vote in person, which is absolutely their right. They could come to the courthouse and vote in person. However, the ballot that we sent them in the mail was the exact same ballot that they would have gotten when they came here to vote in person. But because it came to them in the mail, they thought there was something different about that ballot, and they threw it away. Or they chose not to bring it with them when they come, came in to vote. We had to duplicate a number of ballots. Duplicate meaning we had to provide additional ballots to a number of voters who came to vote in person when they had already received a mail ballot or an absentee ballot. So that was a, part of the big driver was increased cost in ballots that we had to procure. Just in the revenue side of things, really the only revenues we really ever have in the elections realm is our mail ballot fees. You can see in 2018, typically, that's right around seventy-six hundred dollars. The fees we charge is the postage that is actually sent to send out and return. We charge the cities and townships for the actual postage amount that is used to recoup those ballot costs. In 2020, we had mail ballot fees of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. And additionally, the state grant that our portion of that was about seventy-one thousand that we received in revenues that way. So when we look at the state primary, you can see the difference between the number of registered voters that we had from eight- you can see the difference between the number of registered voters that we had from 18 to 20. We had in 2018, 2,300 absentee ballots. In 2020, 6,800 absentee ballots. Or a less total of, total number of people who voted in 2020, 10,000 compared to 13 in 2018. But we had 65% of those people who voted voted by mail or absentee, as compared to only 17% who voted by mail or absentee in 2018. The cost of the state primary is about $170,000 in 2018, was about $170,000 per election. In 2020, it was about $200,000 per election. So the total ballot cost went from $1282 in 18 to a per-ballot cost of $1902 in 2020 for the state primary. In the general, you can see-
Deb, before you... Deb, can I ask a question before you move on?
Yep. Of course.
So when, like, okay, so 40,157 registered voters. So when the, obviously, we don't print the ballots. You get the ballots from a vendor. So do you personally decide how many ballots you're going to get? So if it's a regular election, do you get all 40,157 ballots? And that's one question. And the other question is, for the primary, obviously, you're not going to order 40,000 ballots.
Correct.
I mean, right. So how do you, how do you go about doing that, Deb?
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Coring, I have an algorithm that we've developed using looking at trend data over the last several years that would show approximately what's the turnout been of a primary election. I also look at what's listed on the ballot. Are there a lot of local races that are going to generate interest? Will we be closer to having a 27% turnout? Or will they be closer to having a 21% turnout? If you recall, in 2018, we had a countywide sheriff's race on the primary. That's going to generate more interest than when you maybe just have a judicial race only on the primary ballot. So I look at what the trends are and determine how many ballots should be ordered based kind of on percentages and past turnouts of what that will be. Obviously, in a primary election, I'm never going to order 40,000 ballots for that particular election. In the general election, I will order usually 120% in most cases. I should have ordered a little bit more in 2020. And we did have to do a reprint of some of our ballots to get additional ballots delivered, based on the fact that in a general election, there is always additional interest. We have a higher turnout. And there seems to be that there's often more Election Day registrations that occur, which are not part of our voter turn, pre-voter turnout at that point in time. So those are kind of some of the things I put into consideration when ordering ballots.
Can I ask one other question? So when, let's say you order 30,000 ballots and you use 20,000. How soon, or what, the 10,000 ballots that you don't use, what happens to those? Are they destroyed, or are they just thrown into garbage, or what happens to those?
We never throw anything in the garbage when it comes to elections. That is the one thing that we always tell our election judges, even in the polling places. The only thing you can throw in the garbage at the polling place is your lunch. Everything else, every scrap of paper, every little note, every little thing that goes out to the polling place has to come back. And what we do is those things all remain under lock and key with no access to anything, including those 10,000 ballots that went out to the polling place and now have come back and were not used. They all remain under lock and key until after the contest period is over, which is typically seven days after the canvas board has certified those results. At that time, they're still kept under lock and key in a storage area for 22 months. After 22 months, then we have data retention, if you will, that is approved by the county board to destroy those documents. And they get buried at the landfill or incinerated in an incinerator. They don't just get tossed in the garbage, and they don't just get put in the landfill. All election material is either buried or incinerated.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, in the 2020 general election, you can see that we had 40,323 actual voters who turned out to vote. That is the highest number of voters that we've ever had in Crow Wing County. And the 78%, almost 79% of eligible voters is the highest percentage of voters that we've ever had as well. Of that 79% of people who voted, of our voters who voted, 60% of them voted prior to Election Day, or voted by absentee ballot or voted by mail ballot. So that was 20, almost 25,000 ballots were cast by absentee or mail ballot. And just a little perspective, 3,685 people voted in person in the last week. And that's seven days prior to Election Day, when you could put your ballot directly into the machine. We had 3,685 people who voted during that time here at the courthouse. 947 mail ballot voters in mail ballot precincts voted in person here at the courthouse on Election Day. I cannot say enough about all the teamwork that our Crow Wing County employees, staff, volunteers, election judges put forward to help make all of that mail and absentee process work this year. We had staff from every department who took a shift to help with crowd control. At times, we had people lined up down the hallway, out the door, around the building of the historic courthouse. But we had such a smooth system moving that we were able to move people through rather quickly. Most people waited in line less than 30 to 45 minutes. I did reach out to a few people and got some unsolicited feedback as well, that the process of voting here at the courthouse was very smooth for our customers and that they were able to process through very quickly. That doesn't mean everybody was happy. That doesn't mean that there was not some disgruntlement that was happening, especially for those voters who really wanted to go to their local polling place, and were told that they had to come here. But again, the ability for voters to choose how they wanted to vote, whether it was in person or by mail, was something that has always been in law in Minnesota since 2014. You can choose to vote by mail, or you can choose to vote in person, or you can choose to vote on Election Day. And that still occurred here in 2020. So of the cost per ballot, in 2020, we had a $4.96 cost per ballot, whereas compared to 2018, $5.37. Again, that average cost being about $200,000 in 2018, or, excuse me, 2020, and 170 in 2018. Any questions on anything that we have covered this morning? I know I went way over our allotted time. Sorry.
Nope, but I would say to you and your staff, thank you very much. I thought the election period went extremely well. When 60% of the people choose to early vote, I think that's outstanding, and it shows what the preference is by the voters in this county, at least. So thank you very much. Thank the staff for everything that they did. And likewise for the other departments, don't forget to thank the staff. Don't just take it back to the office and shut the door. They deserve the pat on the back. So thank you very much.
We will pass it on. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks. I'll check on those doors, by the way, just to make sure. We'll be doing a poll. All right. Next on our list is land services. In the Rum River, one watershed, one plan. Mr. Freed?
Well, thank you, Mr., yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'll shift gears a little bit here. I've, all of you have received a bit of information on this in your packet. So I'm just going to go over this. Also have Melissa Bark with Crow Wing Soil and Water Conservation District listening in case there's any other questions that I can't answer, or she has anything to add as well. But I'm just going to go through a little bit of bottom-line stuff first to chat about, and then get into some background and a little bit on collaboration versus entity. So the need here today is we are looking for feedback from this board on the draft joint powers agreement for the Rum River One Watershed One Plan. So that plan is in the works right now, has been for quite some time. And they are going to likely choose to go down the route of forming a joint powers entity to execute that plan, manage it, have projects. Funding would go through that entity. And there'll be a decision that'll be made later this summer on whether our county board wants to join the joint powers entity and adopt the plan. But for now, the policy committee is looking for feedback on the language of the draft joint powers entity. So they want to make a final decision at their policy committee meeting, the Rum River One Watershed One Plan Policy Committee that's going to happen later this week. And they're, again, not looking for feedback on whether or not formally the county board or entities are adopting the plan or joining the entity, but feedback on the language of a hypothetical joint powers entity. So that's the need today, is just to discuss that. And then, good discussion, questions for the board? Do you have any questions, concerns, or comments regarding that? And start thinking ahead a little bit about whether you might be comfortable signing on to a joint powers entity and/or adopting the Rum River One Watershed One Plan. When that's going to come back formally before the county board, it's anticipated to be later this summer. So just kind of getting the wheels turning in our heads on whether or not that's something you're going to be comfortable with and what that's all about. So then, stepping back a little bit, some background information. The Rum River One Watershed One Plan is being led primarily by Malax, Isanity, and Sherburne Counties to our south. They've, they've been working with all the counties involved to develop that One Watershed One Plan as required by the state of Minnesota with the Board of Water and Soil Resources. And just for reference, as you know, we've completed our Pine River One Watershed One Plan and are working to execute this, that plan. This is a different watershed in the southeastern part of the county. It's in 10 counties, it's almost a million acres. Only about 4.7% of it is in Crow Wing County's land base. And in some example lakes, Smith, Borden, Camp, and a little bit of Malax. That's the kind of area of the county that we're talking about. A while back, I guess this was almost three years ago, the county board and a committee of the whole agreed to participate in the planning of the Rum River One Watershed One Plan at the policy committee level, which means a representative. Commissioner Coring and alternate Commissioner Brecken were sort of designated as if they would like to attend the policy committee preparation meetings, that they could attend those at that level. There was very minimal staff involvement in the planning of this watershed plan to date. So we were only at the policy committee level. And of course, you signed a resolution supporting efforts to plan for this watershed in summer of 2018. In late summer, as I said before, we're going to be asked to enter into an agreement to form a joint powers entity and to adopt the plan formally. We've had the county attorney participate in a group of other county attorneys that represent those 10 counties and watersheds that have already discussed this draft joint entity agreement. And they've reviewed it and provided suggested language changes, which have been vetted through this policy committee. And the, recently, the Crow Wing Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Supervisors, they formally agreed to the language of the same joint powers entity at their February 17th meeting. And that was actually 2021, small typo there. That was obviously this year, so pretty recent. So the next thing I'm going to go through is, this was a presentation. I'm taking a snippet of a presentation that was presented to us when we were looking at the type of entity that we wanted to form or collaboration when we were doing the Pine River One Watershed One Plan efforts. So this would have been a couple of years ago. MCIT, which of course represents Crow Wing County as well, as you can see, their logos on the lower right and using a little bit of their branding. So I'm just snippetting their presentation on what's the difference between a joint powers entity and a joint powers collaborative? So just for reference, a collaborative approach is what the Pine River One Watershed One Plan is, where all of the boards still retain all of their own decision-making capabilities and powers. And they agree to form a policy committee to make recommendations to those boards. The approach that Rum River wants to take is different. They want to form an entity, its own government unit, to vet the plan and manage that plan. So just as a reminder, Minnesota statutes sets the background and the ability for counties and LGUs to form new entities and separate entities. And they have to meet certain statutory provisions if they do it. So under a collaboration, which again is what the Pine River One Watershed One Plan is, each of the different local government units or entities have their own decision-making authority, but they share services and make recommendations to form a policy committee, who then makes recommendations back to their own boards to make final decisions. So that's what a collaboration is. There's still a memorandum of agreement. There's still some bylaws there and some rules and participation. But again, each of the local boards maintain their own decision-making. So under a collaborative approach, no board is needed. It's strictly advisory in nature. Like I said, all individual government units retain decision-making. There are no employees. Employee remains an employee of the original government unit, and the members provide the funding. Under an entity approach, again, which is different, which we're proposing, or which the policy committee for Rum River is proposing for this watershed, they're proposing an entity, which means each local government unit combines services to form a new government unit, a new entity that makes decisions. And there's a representative from each entity that's on that joint powers to make those decisions. It's, so it operates autonomously from the boards of the individual members once that's formed. So individual members delegate control to the entity board. They represent the interests of the joint powers entity, and it's necessary to issue bonds or obligations in that respect. So a little bit of a difference, kind of reminder. An entity is a separate freestanding public entity. It can be sued or be sued. It typically operates under its own name, whereas a collaborative does not establish a new identity and remains with the participating members. And that's a little bit how the big difference on those two. A joint powers entity may apply for its own funding and receive its own funding, whereas a collaborative, they designate a fiscal agent through individual local government units to receive the funding. Collaboration isn't an entity. Individual members still subject to a suit. And again, the entity can, may sue and be sued. And there's other provisions and details on that that I'm not going to get too much into. So some things to think about when we get down the road here of choosing to be on an entity or not later in the summer. What authority is the board willing to delegate, and how comfortable are they? Joint power entities, again, original entities still exist. They delegate certain functions. Joint powers arrangements, no new entity created. All authority remains with the counties or SWCDs. So there's a little bit of background on the difference between what's going on here. So having set that up, is there any feedback that the board has or questions or comments on? Again, the issue today is the language of the draft joint powers entity. Any questions or feedback on that?
One question. Jake, has the county attorney looked at this at all?
So the county attorney has looked at it with a group of, excuse me, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The county attorney has looked at it in collaboration with the other attorneys in the other counties that represent this. And they provided feedback directly to the policy committee overseeing that. And I believe they've offered some minor suggested changes or things like that. that. But we haven't received feedback from Don Ryan as of yet that there's any major structural issues with this or, or big problems. It's mostly a, a policy decision by the county board on whether or not they want to enter into such an arrangement.
But today, we're just looking at the language, not whether we'll enter into it or not, correct?
Correct, yep.
So Commissioner Coring, do you have any remarks on this?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. I, I will not be voting for, to create a whole nother, I don't know what, what I'd call it, but a whole nother unit of government. You know, I, I, what, what was it that we got rid of here just a few years ago? We got rid of, was it the Mississippi watershed or something like that? But I'm, I, I, I would be favoring more of a collaborative where we can retain control, even though we've just got a very small portion. I, 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 at least the way you explained it, Jake, I think the collaborative approach would be the one that I would support and not support creating a whole nother entity for this. I, I still, I still maintain that we need to, you know, not to lecture the county board, but that's why people go and elect people, because we're elected to make the decisions on behalf of the people. Now, when we've delegated in a joint powers agreement, that's why we got out of the community corrections agreement, because with Morrison, Aiken, and Crow Wing together, because we had Morrison County Commissioners and Aiken County Commissioners making decisions for citizens of Crow Wing County. And I'm not going to support anything like that. So I, I, I think the way I understand it, at least the way you explained it to me, the collaborative approach would be the one that I would support. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification again, all we're looking at today is the verbiage that's before us, not whether we will join an entity or a collaboration, correct, Jake?
Right.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's correct, but certainly, if you'd like a good discussion to have, because it will be coming forth sooner than later where you'll, you'll need to make a decision on that. So it's always good to gauge a kind of where the board is thinking on that train that's coming down the tracks.
I guess, Steve, the reason why I just weighed in is I, I thought staff was kind of looking, at least I felt like the staff was kind of looking to see which kind of direction the county board wants to go with this. At least that's the way I perceived it.
Commissioner Hope?
Yeah, Jake, did you touch on how this, the funding works for this? Are the counties liable to, to put in dollars towards this?
Okay, so Commissioner Hope, Mr. Chair, the funding for this entity would come from the, the state of Minnesota, the One Watershed One Plan funding efforts. My understanding, it's well over a million dollars once this plan is adopted and approved. If, if this entity is formed, which sounds like is going to be the case, this joint powers entity, the funding would go to the entity, so joint powers, and then they would contract or delegate that to what's called a fiscal agent, one of the LGUs in that county to actually manage it. So there wouldn't be any Crow Wing County levy or budgeted dollars that would go to that entity, is, it would be from those grant dollars that would be coming from the state of Minnesota.
So, so once that grant dollars is used up, what, then what happens? Apply for more grant money?
Yep, so there'll be, that'll be set for a period of time, I think two or three years, and there's an action plan to execute that. And at the end of that, there'll be more money that'll come in. So it'll be just periodic, ongoing funding for that entity, for the One Watershed One Plan.
And maybe just one last quick question, Jake. What, what benefit does, do Crow Wing County residents get from this? Given there's only 4.7% of this within our boundaries?
Well, Commissioner Hope, that's a, that's a great question. So when we're talking specifically about the entity, so that's, that's a great thing for the board to just consider. If, if we're not involved in the entity, so one of the benefits of the entities is they get to make all decisions and don't have to keep going back to their county boards, right, to, to, to make those decisions. So it's a well-vetted plan, and the, the entity will kind of take care of that without going back and forth, as long as there's a shared vision and a shared understanding. When most of the project, most of the projects that are going to happen in this One Watershed Plan are probably going to happen south and east of us. So a lot of the projects will be geared towards other areas in this watershed. And so there's, even without joining the entity, there's probably not going to be a lot of specific projects targeted at, you know, the Borden Camp Lakes areas, because water quality is pretty good in the southeastern part of the county, and it's trending, trending well and stable. So we're going to see a lot of projects south and east of us. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Other questions, concerns? I know Jake, you're, you're looking for a little-
Mr. Chair, can I have a comment?
Sure.
Again, Melissa Barrett, Crow Wing Soil and Water. Just to get back to Commissioner Doug, or Commissioner Hope's comment, typically, these grants do require a, a match as well. And so I think that's kind of maybe what you were asking, and say how that group is going to divide that sort of, what they're required to match these funds with. And then also, I just wanted to say is that currently, how the state has established this, the, the funding that was for these programs has been coming from the Clean Water Land and Legacy Amendment, that 3.8% sales tax that was passed in 2008. And the legislator and the governor is really the one that appropriates that money. And currently, that is kind of done on a two-year cycle. So, so I guess I just wanted to clarify that, you know, these are subject to those, the legislator appropriating that money towards this specific initiative.
So there's, did I hear you right? So there'd be $250,000 worth of match?
It, yes, based off of the $1 million estimate. I would, I could also look it up. I think they had already determined the amount of money they're giving, but I can look that up and send that to you if you're interested. But that would be something else that would have to get negotiated as that project moved forward, and how that match is going to be situated between the, the members.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good information. Again, it goes back to the 4.7% of, of this being within our boundaries. I'm hopeful it isn't just divided in equal lump sums to, to those participating. But if you, if you have the ability to look that up, it would be good before we would make a decision on this.
Commissioner Franzen?
Well, I have to agree with what both Doug and Paul have said. We've had joint powers agreements before that didn't serve us well because of the fact that other counties are making decisions for our county. Now, this is Malax, Isanity, Sherburne would be us for, you know, if they decided that they wanted to do that match, we wouldn't have much to say about it because we're one of the four. And if they wanted to do it equally, that would not serve our people well. It's just like the joint powers. Even though we had 52% of the cost, we only had 1/3 of the vote, and it didn't work. So I haven't had good experience with joint powers agreements.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think the model that we have with the Pine River watershed and how that has worked out and, and the relationships and partnerships we have with Cass County for sure, I would be much more in favor of that. So I kind of agree with the statements that Paul and Doug have been taking on this, especially Mr. Coring, that, yeah, I'd stay with a collaboration.
So Jake, I think that you have a sense of direction here, both in terms of the, the verbiage that's here, which supports an entity, I'm guessing, versus a collaboration. So we would not be in support of that, nor would we be in support of, if it goes forward, joining that entity. Does that sound correct to you?
Oh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, yeah, duly noted, and we thank you for your feedback. That was, that was important to get, get that information, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I would like to take a five-minute recess for obvious reasons.
Groundwork for what we have been trying to accomplish here. Yeah, with me is Dan McInich. He is our survey coordinator for the county. He'll be able to answer any of those deep questions in regards to surveying for you today. But this monumentation project that has been in the works since 1982 really sets the framework on which all your legal descriptions are tied back to these public land survey monuments. And so it's, it tries to keep, you know, the stability in those land boundaries, which, you know, we all rely on, whether it's setting valuation from a taxation standpoint or just buying and selling property. Very important that those are accurate and up to date. And it isn't just, if you look at the, the map there and all those dots, it isn't just trying to turn the dots and, and get them all to certified corners, and, and we'll go through those. But, you know, there's, if, there's monuments that are in the middle of a road, or maybe a farmer has hit them with a plower, just basically obliterated them. Part of this is to continually replace and just provide good maintenance to our overall grid here, in addition to trying to get all those corners actual certified with coordinates is our ultimate goal currently. So with that, you know, Crow Wing County has over 4,400, sorry, does somebody have a question?
Yeah, Gary, just a quick question, not to prolong this, but when you, when, when you identify that corner and you put in, you know, register that monument or whatever have you, are we putting signage there that that's what that is? Like a small sign that might say, you know, this is do not touch, this is a Crow Wing County monument? Or are we putting that stuff up?
I'm gonna let Dan answer that one. He's the one that puts them in there.
You certainly have the ability to do that on every corner. However, I, I wouldn't say that, that happens in every single case. But quite often, on the more remote ones, where someone may not be able to really identify where it is, we'll put a bearing tree sign up so that they're aware that there's a corner in the vicinity and to protect it.
Did that help, Paul?
Yes, it did. I just, I just was curious if we were putting up signs that identified that, you know, do not remove this, this is a, you know, surveying marker, property of Crow Wing County. I don't know, it just seemed like that's something, once we've identified these, I, I just, I want to just make sure that nobody's going and pulling anything up. That's all. Yeah, but that, that's fine. Answered my question, good enough.
I do believe they have some messaging like that on the monument itself that gets driven down into the, into the ground. Is that correct, Dan?
Not so much a warning such as that, but, you know, there's various types of signage we can, we can put up. If that's, you know, something of interest to the commissioners, we could certainly go that direction for future monumentation.
So moving on, we have 4,400 corners in the county. You'll see on the map there, we're just over 66% certified corners. These are corners that actually have certificates and coordinates that are actually on the certificate. So they're certified with coordinates. That's about as good as you're going to be able to get. And then the competence that that corner is placed in the right spot is very, very high. And so our, currently, we, we are on our 2020 corner contract. We are trying to wrap that up. In 2020, we had 113 corners with contract. We did 24 in-house. And how this has kind of changed over years, we used to have a, a full department with a county surveyor. You had six surveyors underneath them, had some administrative staff. And all these corners were tried to be monumented in-house. And so we've, we've switched from really all in-house to doing a lot of, of this work contract with our, we, we go out for bid with local surveyor, our local surveyors out there. And we do as many as we can. We're, we're trying to ramp up in-house as well, maybe up to around 50, maybe 60 a year if we can get there, so that we have a combination of our, our staff doing this, and we basically try to supplement it with the contract work. And so moving forward, what we, we would like to try to do is continue on with this contract work for another three to four years and target the, that red little slice there on the pie chart. That's roughly about 440 corners, and really go after basically changing that red to green and using our in-house, and do that through contract work and using our in-house staff targeted on some of the blue, but mainly more so the yellow is our moving, or is what we're looking to do in the future. Questions on, on remaining out there? Why we do this? Or why is it taking so long since 1982? I bring that up because that's my understanding is when we started this process at the county for monumentation. Not that these were monumented way back. Dan could speak to that.
So maybe you can explain why it takes so long?
Sure. Commissioner Barrows, since 1982, when they did go out and find a lot of these locations, unfortunately, the direction at the time and, and who was leading these departments didn't see the value in actually recording certified corner certificates was a big piece of this. And that's caused some challenges with, with some of our surveyors. And so five, six years ago, we switched to go and, and make the commitment that for it to actually be what we consider very high degree of location, and we're confident that it's set in the right location, that it needs to be certified, and have a certificate on record so that there's something official out there and that it's all, all the information is in one spot. That was one of the largest problems, is a lot of the data and physical work that was done didn't get captured in a way that could be carried forward. And some of that was, was frankly just lost, is my understanding.
Commissioner Coring, did you-
Yeah, Steve, I, I know we're, I know we're running way behind. I'm sorry about that, but I, just a one other question. You know, I, I guess I'm just worried, Gary, that if, you know, this is, I think, I think this is a great project. I think this needs to be done. I think people need to know where their property lines are. But when, when we certify that corner and we find- But when when we certify that corner and we find that corner, is 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 it put into kind of like a GPS coordinates so that that down the road, if we ever have to go and find that within a ten-foot square patch, that GPS-wise, we can locate that? Is it is that what's happening? You know, because I don't want to have us go through this whole process and then then we can't find it ten years down the road. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we definitely are using coordinates. I'll let Dan, if you want to hop in and it's, you know, kind of specifically tell him all that how that works.
You bet, you bet. Prior to about the mid nineteen eighties, most of the corners were set using traditional surveying methods. And so oftentimes, those were not given any coordinates. But since that time, since the the invent of GPAS, yeah, pretty much all the corners on the map, other than the red and I believe it's the blue, they all have coordinates on them. That was kind of a main focal point during the the late two thousands was to get around, find as many monuments as possible, publish coordinates. Unfortunately, they didn't they didn't wrap the present up with a certificate of government corner location.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So just a quick one, Gary. So your plan here would indicate that four years from now, we could be wrapping this up?
I would, Commissioner Hoag, I wouldn't say that it would be wrapped up. While I don't want to say that this is a forever thing, I do believe that in four years, we are going to be in really good shape to talk about that there's always going to probably be a need for maintenance to this grid. That while you can either call it re-monumentation or just monumentation of our county, will be a lot closer. I think the the red piece of the pie chart could be green. I think the blue could be green and I think a chunk of the yellow, there'll still probably be some remaining yellow. We just won't be able to get through that many corners in that amount of time with how much we've dedicated to it. But I think then we can probably shift away from having any contract work and spending the money on that and just fold into maintenance, you know, continue on with whatever's left with yellow and then we have annual things that need to be reset. Or if there's a if a surveyor is challenging the location of one or needs some assistance, you know, that's another piece of Dan's job that kind of gets rolled into making sure that what's existing stays accurate and we can keep it green, if that makes sense. Commissioner Hoag.
Yeah, yeah, I'd I guess we're we're maybe seeing kind of a wrap-up or completion of this project in in some sense. I just recall, I don't know, many years back where we I thought we had a plan that this thing would be complete within X number of years. It seems like we keep extending that plan, but understanding now that we're doing it through contracts, it may have extended the years to this, but.
If I could speak to that, Doug, I know when you guys give me the opportunity to start as director in seventeen, when I first looked at this project, I did anticipate about an eight-year window to get it complete. Unfortunately, if if I show you, if I unshare this screen and pull up the, let's see if I can get the other document up here that we had, or I have, but I just I got too many screens going, but this one here. Sorry, this is taking a second to pull up. Okay, I'll just share this. If you can see this, if you go down to where down here at the bottom, where we have the kind of year-over-year progression, Commissioner Hoag, unfortunately, what happened is our in-house here, we just haven't done really a lot of in-house work on the last few years. In 2020, the big reason there, we actually got a, we thought we could double, go into maybe fifty, sixty, seventy corners, and it was just workload with administrative subdivisions and plaits that came through that it just had been a priority over this type of work. So it's kind of slowed some of the progress and that's just what we've been juggling. But we still, I still think there's there's probably going to be an element here that we're going to need to continuously always ensure that we have resources for maintenance to this grid. But the the contract work will definitely be wrapped up in three to four years. And then we can even look at what's remaining, if it's even worth going after some of those corners. A lot of the ones that'll be remaining will probably be in the north, you know, Little Pine, Timothy areas where there's a lot of remote wooded lands that we definitely see some benefit when we go do a timber sale if needed and we can get in there when we have access to those timber sales to maybe do some of it through an in-house method and and try to be a little more strategic and not just, oh, let's just get it done in in another after four years, three more years if there's anything left and just say as as we get into these areas, maybe we just fill in the blanks because it'll be more efficient and effective with some of the remote areas. But that'll be a, I was thinking that would be a decision for you commissioners when we get through that red piece for sure to the next year on, how do you want to see the very long-term maintenance of this grid? It definitely could be, it's good enough, we don't need to do anything approach, but we're still going to need if if a monument does get moved or removed or if there's one that is, again, challenged, we need to have that expertise to take care of those issues. Long-winded answer, sorry, Doug.
No, that's good, Gary. And again, your eight-year kind of timeline does seem to fit pretty well to nearing the completion. Could you just briefly maybe tell us who benefits from this project?
Sure. I think, you know, there's a combination and and when I'm done, Dan, you probably, Dan tells me this all the time and I should let him talk more. Landowners, of course, right? So that your property that your legal description describes on your deed is actually what you're taxed for. Local surveyors also benefit because if they don't have to go out and then establish and do all the extra research to identify a corner, they can actually potentially bid a job to a customer cheaper when they do their survey for for whoever they need needs to work on. So property owners, two different ways, survey companies benefit. Dan, anybody else I missed here?
Well, I mean, it just lends stability to the whole land land title system, so which obviously land values are tied to a tremendous amount of mortgage loans and investment is tied to land values. And when they when those come in question because they have problems with the boundary lines, there's actually a direct impact there.
And again, Gary, I think you mentioned earlier that I think even with our forestry projects, this would would give us more accurate lines to make sure we're within our boundaries. So.
Absolutely, very important that we cut our trees, nobody else's trees.
Right, right.
So I think it's.
And another thing that it helps a lot, I mean, is we're we're taxing parcels based on certain areas of record and as we improve the monumentation system, we also understand the geometry of the sections better and and we'll have more accurate land areas on which to base our our taxation. So we don't have a lot of citizens in the upriver being overtaxed.
Very good. So Gary, I think this is a good program and I think that you should continue with the contract and let's look at this in another couple of years and see where we're at here, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
So we'll move to number C, Gary, and that's the tax-forfeited property in Garrison.
Yes, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. You know, four years ago, when we reinventoried our tax-forfeited land and had the board adopt the, try to really sell all these smaller fractionalized, whether it's forties or five-acre pieces, two-acre pieces, one-acre pieces, all those properties in Breezy Point, those have been for sale, but really went more aggressive at trying to consolidate our land base under our tax-forfeited land asset management policy. We we had a lot of different properties that we really went after to try to sell. On the screen here is a parcel in Garrison. That's a one-point, like six-acre parcel. And we currently, for a tax-forfeited value, have about sixty-three thousand on that. So you look at that parcel and it's right on Highway eighteen. It's zone commercial and for sixty-three thousand out there, I felt that that was a pretty fair value, you know, if something like a maybe a Dollar General or something like that, you see them popping up everywhere, even though there's already one now in Garrison somewhere else. I thought, yeah, it should be fairly reasonable and then based on the the sales that have happened up and down that little corridor there. We were contacted by MinDOT that says, I see you're trying to sell that property, but to the south here, I don't know if my cursor comes through on or not on the on the screen sharing, I can't see, but
It does.
To the south there are MinDOT highway buildings for for whatever section that they have that that covers, you know, just like we'd have our highway sheds. MinDOT has the same thing sprinkled throughout the state. And so there are MinDOT buildings there and they use this property and the district manager there calls and says, well, this parcel here highlighted in blue, which is the tax-forfeited parcel, is fully encumbered by a right-of-way easement for exclusive use by MinDOT. And so I'm like, yikes, that kind of hurts the value. And then we, this was a couple of years ago, so we kind of debated what the value could be. They agreed to do get an appraisal done. We they submitted appraisal to us just a couple of weeks ago for a value of sixty-four hundred dollars. And so I wanted to bring that to see kind of see the flavor of the board if you guys would still be in favor of disposing or getting selling this to MinDOT for the sixty-four hundred. And why I needed to say this is because we had such a high value on it when it was determined that the easement really restricts the use to only one user. You know, it gets to be really debatable what the overall value is. And so with the work that they had done, I would be looking to see if I just bring this to county board for a request for board action to sell this to MinDOT at the sixty-four hundred and wanted to hear any discussion from the board today if that seemed all right, if they wanted any more research done on this parcel before I took that before you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is obviously this is in my district. Gary called and talked to me about this. This makes total sense to me. If you see where the right-of-way, where their right-of-way is in there, it's it's really kind of virtually turned this into an unbuildable lot. So I think we get the sixty-four hundred dollars and and let them have it and and move on.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoag.
Gary, where where exactly is the right-of-way?
The easement actually covers the whole parcel.
Oh, so it's an easement, not not right-of-way issue?
Well, it is a right-of-way easement, but but it's it actually is over the whole, it described the whole parcel.
Not sure you're.
And one other thing, you know, Doug, as you know, there's been talk for for forty years about a four-lane coming up from, you know, where Onamia, where the four-lane stops just north of Onamia and the four-lane, you know, and I'm just wondering if this is, you know, where they, I'm not sure where they've got the route, but I'm wondering if this this is where they have easement bought so that in the future, if they do turn this into four-lane, you know, that's that's a that's a possibility. I was wondering the same thing, why they have a right-of-way easement, but I think that they might be doing some planning for in the future is my guess, so.
Well, Gary, that was my question, what easement to what? Do we know?
Easement to what? I had it here. It basically was for the it was to if they needed to construct, widen or provide more. It's it's fairly lengthy. It's basically they can use it as if they need to do anything with State Highway eighteen.
So so what does that mean to all of their current buildings and everything else along that stretch that's somewhat close to eighteen?
So this, the those buildings that are to the south, those also, they technically don't own the land there, that's all a highway easement as well, and they built their buildings where they built them. So you see how the parcels run across the road on some of those? So you take like this one, the owner is over here, the liquor store owner, but they own across the road. But the easement, when it's described out, it kind of runs, all of this is encumbered by a highway easement, which gives exclusive rights to how they want to use it, basically. And in on these parcels, they decided to build a MinDOT, you know, shed for their their snowplows and what have you.
Gary, do you know how wide the easement is? I mean, you say it takes up the whole property, but how many feet?
I don't have that, Rosemary, off the top of my head. It was in the report. I didn't honestly take a lot of time with that because when it described out that it was across the whole parcel, it was like, well, it's it's taken the whole parcel, so I but, you know, for point of reference, when you look at a, you know, a distance, we can get any distance here that you want, but the it basically runs the it the legal description for this is is all encumbered by that easement. But sorry, I don't have the feet, Rosemary, in front of me.
Thank you.
I think, Gary, that looking at the faces around the room, that we're probably going to accept Commissioner Coring's position and and like we don't have a lot of choice here, so we'll go go with that at this time.
Okay, thank you, folks.
One other quick thing, Gary, before you, I don't know if you're going to check off or not, but Commissioner Franzen and I will be late to the eleven-thirty meeting.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number three, which is our traffic control engineer. Bray.
Look at that.
What I do.
Wow, that's quick.
Except it's not on the right slide here. Okay, start with this one. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Today, I'm here to continue our discussion about the local option sales tax. So about a year ago is when we really first started to. So about a year ago is when we really first started to talk about how it's, its future. And we had another opportunity here a few weeks ago at the local, or pardon me, at the Transportation Advisory Committee to have another discussion about that. And you asked for me to start on this process that, to set a public hearing and then actually set it up for your consideration coming up here in April 13th. And so I want to continue the discussion today. This was a map of the, all of Minnesota and the tax rates, the sales tax rates, you can't see it very good, but each of you have a handout, by the way. I put on your desk, Chelsea, I gave you one too. The, so in Crow Wing County, it's currently in, both Brainerd and Baxter levy a half a cent sales tax. And if you're buying goods in Brainerd and Baxter, the current sales tax rate is 7.875 and the rest of Crow Wing County is 7.375. That's just really for reference. Okay. How do I advance this here? There we go. The next slide I have is specific for local option sales tax for transportation. This was legislation that was passed in 2013. And since then, this is the most recent map that I could find, February, just last month. 53 counties across Minnesota have adopted a local option sales tax specifically for, to fund transportation. Some of it, some of it is a quarter cent, some's a half cent. And the green portions you see is a wheelage tax. This is something that Crow Wing County has not chosen to do. This is a tax per, per vehicle that's assessed when you pay or get your license tabs each, each year. And I recall the conversation back in 2015 when we were working on this, that that one did not receive favor because it, compared to the local option sales tax, it was a lower dollar amount plus viewed as a direct tax on Crow Wing County residents. And I'll get to the contrast of that in just a second here. So that's the distribution. The vast majority of counties are, have levied a local option sales tax used for, for transportation needs. Here's a little bit of history. Again, 2013 was in the enabling legislation and the big change was it allowed counties by a, county boards by a simple majority vote to impose a countywide tax. That's in contrast to what cities have to do right now is to have it pass voter referendum. Plus they have to get special legislation to even get it to the voters. And so it was a big change and it took a couple of years, but in 2015, the county board at the time, most of you are still here, agreed to adopt a half cent sales tax on countywide taxable sales. The, it came with a $1.2 million road and bridge levy offset, so lowered the property taxes and agreed to this new tax, which is also shared by locals. And then the sunset date was set at 2025, so December 31st, 2025 would be the last day of collection. I skipped over a very important part there is that bullet number two. In that process leading up to the 2015 adoption, we partnered with the University of Minnesota Extension. They did an economic study for us here and deter, helped us to determine that over 51, or it's over 51% of this, the revenue generated from the local option sales tax would be paid by our guests. And I just recall that being a tipping point for those at the time or a very important, important piece of information. And so it was adopted in December of 2015. And it was an act, or the first time it was collected by merchants was April and our first payment was in June 2016. So the initial projections back then, when we were getting some help with our transportation partners like AMC, MICA, Transportation Alliance, some of the projections were $4.2 million annually. And since then, we have outperformed that every single year. I have a couple of graphs. And we, as of last December, we got our last payment. It was up to 7.4 million, so quite a lot different. And actually, if we, as we've talked about over this, this very challenging year, it's continued to go up even though, despite COVID and some of the challenges with that. So far, since June 2016, we've collected $31.2 million. And I'll show you how that's been spent in a couple of slides. Any questions? Here is the annual lost revenue trends. At the top, it just shows the annual going up each year, the big jump from 2016 to 2017, a 67% increase. That's based on, we only collected for a portion of 2016. But it's been a steady increase ever since its adoption. The chart on the bottom shows our monthly revenues. And this kind of helps to reiterate that it is our guests that is help, are helping us generate this revenue. It peaks in the summer and comes down in the, in the winter and I would expect, you know, our county quadruples in population in the summer months and that seems to indicate that a lot of our guests are paying. It's just another way. I have a little note there at the bottom, the highest is actually the payments we get lag two months. And so our September payment was, this year was the biggest ever. And like 600 and, or 866,000, that's on my next slide. Was, the payment was made to us in September, but that means that it was at the cash register in July is when that was paid. And that corresponds with our guests. Any questions about this one? Here is just a monthly tab. I just wanted to point out the 866,000, that was a, a payment on September 3rd. And incidentally, just a quick, some quick math on what that means is $173 million of retail sales in 31 days. And if you go to the bottom, the 700, oh, excuse me, 7,400,000, that's $1.5 billion of retail sales in Crow Wing County. And that doesn't count food, that doesn't count clothing and other things that are not taxed. There is a reason why those big boxes want to be here, because the people come here. We are a regional hub and we, this is been a, you know, great reason why it's been so successful here. Next slide, I just, is the trending month over month. I just wanted to show this, that we are tracking this very closely month over month. And those peaks and valleys in there, it's important that we're projecting so we can get the budget right. And if we get the budget right, when we promise projects, we know we can deliver on the promise. And so I just wanted to show that, that we are tracking it very closely and every single month. Here's, my next slide is all our major or primary revenue sources at the highway department. Of course, there's a component of property tax, the local option sales tax, state aid, and then federal and state grants. You can see the charts there and the gray one, I'll just start from the top. The gray one is state aid. See if I can get this to work. This one's state aid, pretty stable up till right here. It was this year, we just received three quarters of a million dollar less than we, we thought because of COVID. People were driving less, people were working remotely. Apparently they were still vacationing and coming and spending their money here, which was a good thing for us. But, but traditionally pretty stable up until this year. The orange one is the local option sales tax. You can see we just started it in 2016 and just kept going up and up and up and up. And for the first time since we've enacted it, it's surpassed state aid. And state aid, I have some more graphs that show, make, showing the percentage of these revenues per year. The blue line is the property tax levy or the road and bridge levy. This is the $1.2 million offset that was part of the, the program in 2015 when it was adopted. And then it has been stable ever since at about 2 million. And then the bottom one, the yellow one, is the state and federal grants and because they're competitive in nature, they kind of jump all over. But we had, you know, up and down, some years we get them, sometimes we don't. But it is a significant source of revenue and has really enabled us to do some very nice projects and continue to keep our system going. The next slide is some pie charts. I just, what I'm trying to show here is how that has grown. The, the percentage of the local option sales tax has grown over time and we've become reliant on it now. As I mentioned, it's the largest revenue source that we have. And we have discovered that state aid, which has been traditionally very stable, is not as stable as we thought. And some of the trending is still yet to be seen, but I think we all know and we're hosting this meeting remotely now that the work in Minnesota and around the country, there's going to be a lot of people trying to keep this once we come out of COVID, work remotely, drive less. And we don't know what the recovery period is in terms of the gas tax. There's also certainly been trends to electric vehicles and those things. So if it's, the revenue is based on the sale of gas, then that is some potential to generate lower revenues and continue on that downward or, or plateauing trend for revenue. So just quickly down at the bottom, no lost. And then these orange ones are the local option sales tax and the percentage they represent throughout the years. The top one is projected for 2021. You can see that the, the blue portion is the levy. And I already mentioned this, where the lost is now more than state aid. The next slide I wanted to show and, and what I was starting to say was that of all the property taxes that Crow Wing County residents pay here, less than five cents out of every dollar comes to the road and bridge levy. So that to help fund road construction and maintenance in Crow Wing County. And over the years, we kind of surmise that it would, to replace the lost, which is now up to 7.4 million and projected to going up to about 7.8 million this year, to replace that would require a 19, 19.1% increase in the overall property tax levy for Crow Wing County. And there'd be a new set of commissioners at that point. You know, we've, we've talked many years over just 5%, I couldn't imagine the, the conversation around 19%. And that's just, that's assuming that all the other departments and all the other needs that help kind of increases in the levy aren't there. So just by itself, 19.1%, and I, I don't think that's anything, I just want to show it for effect because we've been talking about and guessing what that is. I just figured it out in a snapshot at time.
Certainly shows the impact.
And another, just, it's a five, five times what we get right now. Okay, now I get into some maps and talk, maybe talk a little less. Here is the sales tax projects that we have done so far in Crow Wing County. And you've seen these before, but what I haven't shown before is the other stuff. So those are just the resurfacing projects. So there's new pavement, but when the resolution was adopted in 2015, the board also told the community and, and inserted in the, the resolution that we could spend this money on maintenance, like shouldering, seal coating, spot patching, crack sealing, gravelling, striping. We spent, over this period, we spent almost $800,000, that's on striping, to make sure that you can see on a rainy day where the center line is or at night. Dust control, gravel, shouldering. And then also we've done a lot of very overt savings for County Route 15, 115. We could not be in the position we're at right now. We're ready for 2023. We have a 95% plan. We're going to start moving into the purchase of right of way. We would not be positioned to deliver that project if it weren't for the lost. And we've been overtly putting money aside so we can afford it and continue to maintain the system in other areas. So this is where it's all been sale, been spent. On the num, on the first bullet there, that's 72 miles of, of paving and reconstruction. That's in addition to the other, what the other funding sources have paid for. And there's the total 31.2 million that we've generated. Any questions on this? Here's what we're planning to do up till 2025. You can see that, again, pretty well distributed amongst what we have done and what we're planning to do in the 2025, up to 2025. Of course, in a month here, on the 13th of April, I'll be coming here and asking you to consider the five-year plan that we've went through a few weeks ago. And here are the actual completed projects with all funding sources. So we've done a lot of great work here to get our system up to speed. If you recall, we were never going to get on top of it. There was never enough money in the system to get on top of the deterioration. As soon as we would pave five miles, 10 miles would deteriorate that year and, and get past our thresholds. So the, here's the 2015 Riot Quality Index, Riot, or RQI, and that's essentially the roughness, the roughness of the road. There's a lot of ways to measure it, a lot of ways to quantify it. This is the measurement that MinDOT helps us with, with they come out with their fancy laser laden trucks and things like that to measure each roadway. And so we've been measuring roadways for several years. But if you went back to 2015 before the lost was in place, you would see our road system in this condition. And the reddest road is the roughest or the poorest condition. And the green roads are in the best condition and, and everything in between, so it's a continuum. There's not one, there's differing shades of red, yellow, orange, things like that. So we had a lot of poor roads all over. And I wanted to show again here all the projects that we did with all of the money. And our Riot Quality Index is this today after our 2020 construction. So you're seeing a lot, you're still going to see red. You see 115 is on there in orange and that's queued up and ready to go. Like I mentioned, we have a, a plan ready to go, are very close. And there's still some yellows and greens, but it's a far cry from what it was in 2015. So in just five years, we've made that progress. We can undo it if we don't have the money in the system to be able to do these road, it's all about money. Trying to be on top and before it deteriorates, we're resurfacing it. So the, any questions before I get into this part? So the co, the current lost resolution sunset in December 31st, 2025, as I mentioned. And I already mentioned 31.2 million dollars and how much we've collected. And our plan was to get to zero deferments and that means that we are, as soon as it gets rough over that threshold we've established over the years, we're able, we have the money to do it instead of waiting, well, we can't do it and we find ourselves 10 years later and it still needs to be done. And we are trending a little bit ahead on that. And there's a, there's a reason for that. We're kind of tending towards the easiest fix to just get on top of it. And I'll get into that in a second. And I'll get into that in a second. County Road 115 expenditures are moderating our projects because it's a big expenditure for just a small amount of roadways. So one of the challenges I brought to you over the last two years at the local, pardon me, at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting was an inability or a diminished ability to plan for 2026. So if it sunsets in 2025, I'm not certain what what funding sources and what the levels it will be come 2026. So it'll be very hard for me and my team to come up and present you with a plan next year. And so why, that's why it's relevant now to start this conversation about what you would like to do with it. And you gave me a little direction at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting. I prepared some of those things for you. One of the reasons why we need to continue it on is that if we don't continue to put money in the system, that will go right back to the red roads and the orange roads that we saw in 2015. And we need to protect our investment. So we're kind of here because, or we were there back then is because we did the roads, but we couldn't maintain them. At that time, we weren't even crack sealing. We didn't have the money to even crack seal as much as we should. And now we're up to about over nearly 100 miles per year and doing it the way we should. Some of the things that we spend the money on in the future is system expansion needs. And that might include the traditional term expansion and more lanes and things like that. But it might mean longer lasting fixes, like digging up the whole road, at least grinding it up and starting over instead of just putting pavement on that's this thick, come with gravel and everything, redo the whole surfacing. That I would consider expansion, intersection and safety improvements that that we need to do. Wider roadway sections, we've heard some conversations about shoulders and those type of things. And then gravel to bituminous conversions, that came up after our Transportation Advisory Committee are actually at it. That is, we still have 42 miles of county road gravel, and I know some residents would like that. Right now, they're cost prohibitive and maybe don't rise to the priority level. But as more funds come in and we get on top of some of these things, that might rise in the the priority. And I'll certainly be up to the board to help inform that decision. And then possibly sharing. We've had some recent examples of how, not direct sharing, like write cities' checks or anything like that, but to be, take on more of the costs when our projects come to town. Like a NISWA, for example, benefited this year pretty substantially where our old cost share policy would hold them responsible for a number of things. We decided, the board decided to modify the policy to take that on ourselves. That was the tune of about a quarter million dollars of savings just for them. And we were able to do that with the money that's available in the law, in lost. So here is the, an attachment to the old resolution, or it's the current resolution, excuse me. And what the requirement is by the the law, the statute in 2013, is you must have a public hearing. You must tell the public what projects you're going to spend the money on that's going to be generated by the lost and then have a sunset date or say when it'll shut off. In this case, it was paying for a certain amount of projects or 2025 on December 31st. So here's one of the attachments that's for the current resolution. At one, we broke it up between County Road and Casaw. And here's what the proposal is for what I heard from you a couple of weeks ago. What I heard was a direction to consider putting, consider an extension to 2040. So 20 more, so the five years that are remaining on the current one and then an additional 15 to make it 20, so 2040. And this, this map, and there's a whole lot of roads on there, represents what would need to be replaced between now and 2040. And so you might look at that close and go, wait a second, we just did that road. But it's a 20, it's 20 years. And although our preservation, we're extending the life of our roads, we're still probably around 20 years before, not before it's completely used up, but before it gets over that threshold where we have to look at it. And that fancy, that all that data that we collect with the fancy MINDOT van, we're using that to generate these. We know based on that data, and we have a lot of data points now, how these roads deteriorate and when they'll get over that threshold and when they should be replaced. So this one's for the Casaw system. It includes some bridges and some intersection improvements. Here's the actual graph, a listing of it and some dollar amounts associated with those. And here's the county road system proposal. Yeah, 21 to 2040. These are the roads that would be authorized for use with the lost.
Hey, Tim?
Yes?
Tim, I, if you remember back in 2015, I was the lone no vote. And it was a four to one vote. And I just want you to know that I certainly am convinced that in your program here. So just, just letting you know, I, I, you don't have to convince me anymore. Maybe you have to convince Commissioner Hoag, but, but not me.
I think this is actually my last, one of my last slides.
No cave.
No cave. Let's see, well, can I, well, I, I have to. I was going to poke a little fun. I was going to include in the slide deck the actual resolution. And at the top of the resolution, it does state who voted for it and who didn't vote for it. But I didn't, I didn't include that, but I guess I just said it, so. I, I appreciate your comments.
Tim, Tim Hoag probably, probably, Tim Hoag would have liked to see that probably, but.
I might have it right here. Yep, there it is. So the, here's my last slide, I think, is you, at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting two, two weeks ago, we talked about some of the the options. I presented some of those 10 years, 15 years. And and what I heard, the direction from, and all the board members are present, that let's work up 2040, see what, see what that looks like, present that to the public, get their input coming up, set a public hearing. And at the last board meeting, you set the public hearing for April 13th, right here in this room. And between now and then, I already have a meeting scheduled with the Chamber of Commerce, their Government Affairs, the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce. They have a lot of membership around, not only here in Brainerd Baxter, but around the the county to meet with their Government Affairs Committee. They were the ones that I spoke with and I think another commissioner spoke with last time in 2015 as this was being considered. So I'm looking forward to that meeting and hearing what the business owners, the business community feels about this. And I'd be happy to have one of you or come along if if you so desire.
Perhaps Commissioner Coring would be a great one to have speak at that meeting since it created such a change in position.
No, Mr. Chairman, you're doing such a great job as chairman. I, I nominate you to go.
Okay, so the, the public hearing is set for April 13th. And then the process is final adoption either that meeting or if you want to gather more information sometime after that, of course. And then we file or just update the Department of Revenue that it's continued on. I've, I've talked to a gentleman, very knowledgeable at the Department of Revenue, and he's helped me with this process. And it, it is, if you're continuing it on, it's just another public hearing to tell the public, get their input, show the projects, when the sunset date would be, and then just file with them and they will continue it on as they, as they have since 2016.
At our tax meeting, Tim, there was, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there might be some uncertainty that we could go out 15 years or to 2040.
Right.
Apparently that's been considered and we can do that at this point?
There is no limit. But you must have a sunset date or or a dollar amount has reached, which mean, which is equivalent to the the cost of all your projects. And so it doesn't say it can only be 10 years or 20 years. You just have to have basically when it shuts off.
Okay. Any commissioners interested in joining Engineer Bray for the chamber meeting?
I'm available if he needs help.
I'll have to just reiterate the date. I want, I think it's the 5th of April. So they'll meet before.
Come for with Commissioner Brecken?
Absolutely. And here's the sample resolution. It's essentially the same as the other one, the previous one. Actually, it's the current one. And I'll let you read that, through that and and take some comments on on that between now and April 13th. I imagine it'll start to generate some discussion around the the community. Please share those comments you hear with with me or I'll help you answer any of the questions that might come up from your constituents about that.
Okay. Looks like it's a goal. Very proud of that program. Although I, there is one title in here that that concerns me. When we read this, and I forget where it is here, but it says lost revenue. Just the terminology.
It's almost like a lost future, right? Remember? Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Good information.
Yes, thank you, Tim. So with that, we will move into the status of public entry into county buildings.
Mr. Chairmembers, I did put together some background information for your consideration today. First off, I'd like to start by saying, you know, our, our offices are not closed. They have been open, they have been open entirely through the pandemic, serving people, serving residents, doing the mission of county government. We have restricted public access to our buildings and it is primarily in service to preventing a spontaneous crowd from forming in the middle of a pandemic. So the current buildings in Corwin County, the Judicial Center is controlled by the courts and that has been, and has remained open at their order. The Sheriff's Office as well, but they have such a contained lobby. So they really contain folks to that lobby. Same with the County Attorney's Office, they have that lobby that people can get into, but not into their offices. In the Historic Courthouse, it has worked fairly well for us actually to buzz people in. So we have an intercom system here now and people come and they push the button. And if they have business in the building, well, of course, they come in. If they have business in another building, which is primarily the case, then we direct them to the other building. But it has worked fairly well for us. The Highway Department has a buzzed entry as well. The jail has a buzzed entry, they're doing fingerprinting by appointment. Community services and land services, those are the two areas that if you are inclined towards the buzzed entry, we would need to consider adding that buzzed entry to those buildings as well. Give you an idea of some of the other cities in Corwin County, City of Baxter, Brainerd, Pequot Lakes, Niswau, Crosby, ISD 181. Most of them, they are meeting still in person. Most of them still have the public attending virtually, but some of them do allow the public to attend in person. What we heard from that is it makes some folks nervous. And in our neighboring counties, Aiken, Morrison and Cass, I think you'd find fairly similarly, the buildings are open with limited access by appointment only in many cases. Public can attend some of these meetings in in person. They had a few planning and zoning meetings where quite a few showed up that made some staff nervous. To give you an example of that locally, we had an application for, I think it was Crescent Bay. And we have 35 people who attended the public hearing virtually. And so put picture 35 people in this room. That's your choice. And so I think that's the challenge is how do you restrict a spontaneous crowd from forming? You could say you're going to allow entry into the building, but not into the group meetings. You could do that if you wish. To give you some other relevant information, we have about 20 to 25% of county employees that are currently vaccinated to put, to give you that bit of information. Community services and land services are probably our highest traffic buildings, which is why they probably have been most restricted to this point. To give you an idea, about 5,000 visitors at the desk in community services. I think that's within a, a month. And that is what I have for your consideration.
I know one of the concerns for us to consider is the tax season coming up, tax collection season. And so I'm speaking specifically about land services at this point. And I know that they have a lobby that allows for social distancing. And I think that regardless of what our decisions are today, we have to follow those rules and the masking rule. I don't think that we can let go of those two elements. So I look at land services personally and I say, if we open it up on May 1st, I don't see a huge issue there. Now, if somebody has something that, some other opinion or feels similarly, I'd like to hear it.
Well, I, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I guess I, I disagree. I, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, this, this sales tax thing, the public hearing, in a way, it is kind of a big deal. I suspect there won't probably be that many people that will weigh in on it, if any. But, but what if there was a whole bunch of people that wanted to weigh in on this? I don't know that they, I mean, I guess they'd all be on, on teams, I guess. But what if, what if somebody doesn't have teams or doesn't have a computer and they want to weigh in? They're not being able to express their views to the people that are elected to represent them. I mean, I guess they could call us at home, but they're not being able to come to the public square and express their opinion. So I don't know. I, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight with you about this, but I, I just, I just think we, we need to be open for business. I don't, I don't know why Walmart is open then, and I don't know why Target's open. I don't know why Fleet Farm's open. I don't know why, I don't know why all these other places are open then. Why, I don't, but, but, but yet, the buildings that people have paid for with their property taxes and their taxes, you know, I guess, yes, I understand, Tim, that they're, they're, we're still open by appointment. But it isn't a free, it isn't a free access. They're, they're, they just don't, they can't come here and just have immediate access like I'd like to expect. So anyway, enough said. You know where I'm at.
Mr. Brecken?
Mr. Chair, my question is with like, you know, land services too, is when the taxes go out, when do people actually start coming in to to pay them personally? Can you answer that, Gary?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brecken, we're going to mail tax statements and notices right at the end of the month. So by law, they have to be out by the 31st. And we have, that week after, we really start to see a lot of people, once they get that, it's like, it's such a routine for them. Once they get a bill, they want to come and pay it. And that'll start right away, first part of April. Probably the heaviest, it'll start second week of April, all the way through, we'll have a heavy load of people wanting to come in and pay their property taxes.
Okay. So Gary, would, would, would you be advocating then for opening your building on April 1st or April 10th or 15th, whatever?
I would advocate, if, if, if you guys wanted me to have an opinion, that we would open our building as soon as you would let us open it.
Commissioner Franzine?
Well, I think that we should open not only that building on April 1st, but community services too. We can still have people wear masks, we can still do social distancing, but there's plenty of room in this building too. I, I feel the same way that Paul does. These are public buildings. I know that according to Tim's report, the school isn't open, but I've been over there a couple of times recently and just walked right in the front door. So I'm not sure, you know, everything else seems to be open. And the, the governor has. Everything else seems to be open, and the, the governor has really changed his rules for most things. Most can't be at a hundred percent, but if we follow the six feet and the masking, I think we'll be fine. We've used, we've got Plexiglas barriers. We've got all kinds of preventive measures that we put in place to, to deal with this, and I don't want our people to be inconvenienced.
Commissioner Hoag?
Question, Tim, I don't know if you can answer this, but the cost to install that buzz-in system? You know, I think the biggest thing that I've heard, and again, not, not to pick on Land Services, but if it's thirty below zero, or, you know, just inclement weather, yet we still have a large lobby, we still have, you know, I don't know how many feet of, of railing that go around that we could space people as well require a mask, just to get them in the door, I think is the biggest complaint that I've heard.
Me too.
Not, you know, once they're in there, you know, we, we've got staffing to take care of their needs, but to get that in place first, and then maybe set a fully open in a month or two, as, because we're seeing the vaccine numbers increase dramatically here. It would just give, give us a little more time to get more people vaccinated, but in short term, we buzz these two other buildings in possibly, and again, just get people in the door, I think would solve a lot of the concerns. I don't know what, if that's doable, or if there's, if it's cost prohibitive, you know, given the time that we've got here, I just, if you've got anything you could share on that.
Administrator?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hoag, we need about two weeks to put a buzzed entry on either one of those two doors. What has worked fairly well at the Historic Courthouse is not on the exterior door, on the interior vestibule. You pull on the door, and when you pull on the door and it's locked, it, what we have found is some people aren't reading what's on the door. Call us, we'll let you in. On the vestibule at the Historic Courthouse, you pull on the door and you go in. It sends a different psychological message to people. I don't know why, but it just does. And so we have found that to work better than the intercoms on the other doors. We get more traffic there. So if you're gonna do this, yeah, I know. I haven't said a, I haven't said a dollar amount. And so if we were to put it on the exterior doors, we got an estimate for twenty-seven hundred bucks apiece. It would be eligible for federal stimulus dollars. I think there's gonna be a little bit of additional expense if we move it to the interior doors. We have to put locks on those doors. We don't typically have them there now.
Can't hear you, Debbie. So I'm not sure Commissioner Corrigan can hear.
Mr. Chair, if we were going to put them onto the interior doors into the vestibules, it's a four-week lead, lead time. We need additional hardware to move that process from outside inside and change some of those other things. So it will be a four-week lead time. The cost is roughly a little bit more to move them inside. It's not so much the cost thing as what the timeline difference would be between doing the interior doors and the exterior doors. That's the only thing I wanted to point out.
Thank you.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't favor, I don't favor, I'm a no vote on putting those buzzers on there. Once, once, I think, like Commissioner Hoag said, more people are vaccinated, and, and it looks like we're out of the woods, or hopefully almost out of the woods, there's gonna be no reason to have those buzzers on there. So we're spending money that I don't think needs to be spent, and so I, I don't, I don't favor that at all.
Commissioner Hoag?
Gary, do we not have somebody sitting at a desk in the lobby area of Land Services?
Commissioner Hoag, yes, we started that last week, that we have somebody at the, right at the doors. So if somebody comes to the doors, now, we have experienced where we have some nice signage there, but they pull on the door and they're like, oh, they must be closed. They, some people haven't been looking for the sign. We've been thinking of, should we put a sign outside as well? The last thing we want are people walking away thinking that we're closed when we are open to the public. Most of the, we've had, had a problem, but we have had a few snags there, but we, we do have somebody trying to almost meet them at the door before they even, even pull on it to say, come on in, to alleviate any of those issues.
Well, to that point, it just seems like we could almost unlock the doors and, and then let that person make sure that these people are placed within the social distancing and have a mask, and, and our problems are solved. We know that, again, some of these are, are, again, software issues where people will call up and they won't get an answer. And, and, you know, I'm not pointing blame at anyone. Again, it's software, but gosh, all of those issues would go away if we could get them in the door, and if we've got somebody sitting there, let, let, it just seems better to communicate verbally to say, you know, go over to this spot, to this spot, and we'll get to you soon as we can. I think would, would satisfy people's issues a lot better than pulling on a door and ripping their arm off because it's locked.
Steve.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Amen.
Well, I agree with Doug. I think you can do that at Community Services also, and let's get these buildings unlocked so people don't think we're not working.
I'd like to hear from Director Terry. I know we're still running a vaccine clinic over there, and that can cause some issues, though.
Mr. Chair, County Board, yes, you're absolutely right. We are assigned specific populations by MDH to vaccinate. So for example, we are going to be responsible for the judiciary, for our public transit, for some of the meat processing or packing areas. And what we found works really well right now with those smaller population groups is to have them in our building. Our supplies are there, our staff are there. We don't have to transport the vaccine. It's, it's a time saver, for sure, for our staff. We also had a person sitting in the front lobby, allowing access, so watching for folks coming in and out, not only for appointments, but when people walk up to our door, we also allow them to come on in to get service, certainly. But with the vaccine clinics, it got pretty tricky pretty quickly to try and have someone sitting in the lobby and allowing access for the vaccine clinic, and then also for appointments. And so we're trying to not schedule as many appointments on vaccine clinic days to alleviate some of that confusion. But we certainly have public access. If people come to the door, we don't turn anyone away. Does that help? We would appreciate a continuation of the way we're providing service today. To continue, I don't know how quickly we're going to get through these pods or pockets of vaccinations. We didn't receive any vaccination, for example, or vaccine, for example, this week. Our, our allotment was zero. So that depends too. Certainly, we're flexible and we'll make whatever happen, happen that you guys suggest, but would appreciate that May first date, probably at the earliest. We're also continuing to work through waivers, so we're able to provide service in this different way, and I have not heard that those waivers will be going away anytime soon. Those are retracted by the governor's emergency order, DHS, MDH. I think those are the only agencies.
I think as well, the, the level of people going into the two different buildings, you're, you're quite a bit higher probably than Land Services, as well with everything you've got going on. I could see an extension of, of that. But that's just my, my thoughts. I, just to help balance out things.
Okay.
But, but Land Services, I think, is something we could do fairly quickly, I believe.
I think there's certainly a need for that with Land Services, with the tax season coming up and what Gary enlightened us with. So Commissioner Brecken, anything?
I guess I'm, I agree with Doug too, is that I'm willing to take this in steps. I think Land Services needs to get open as, as soon as we can. I think that we should continue to evaluate this, you know, I wouldn't set, necessarily put May first as set in stone, but I think we can definitely open the other buildings in, in some progressive way as we branch it out.
Okay, and I'm assuming with what we're talking about here is that our board meetings and our other meetings that we have, budget and personnel, would stay as they are currently, or are we talking about allowing people in for those?
Tim, did we not, early on, open up this meeting in particular to say the first, kind of first come, first serve? Only allowing so many people in the door? I, I thought we had something like that.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
For, for county board meetings, I thought we opened the doors and we let people come in until, you know, the room was at a safe level, and then we, and then we didn't allow anymore after that.
Not that I recall.
No?
We were open to the public for a little while. We, we had closed, and we weren't letting anybody into our buildings at all. And then we reopened for a period, and then back in about November-ish, we went to what I would call a more modified closure. But I don't recall us ever sort of letting people in one at a time. With the buzzed entry system, you could do that. And the advantage of that is the doors are downstairs. You're meeting up here, so is the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment. There may be some value to using that intercom system for that. I think about that as it relates to the meeting rooms in Land Services too. We leave those buildings just unlocked, and the meeting's down in the basement. Nothing's ever happened.
Well, that might even be something we could try, because we're still under the governor's orders as far as the distance issue, so we could keep count of how many people ring in to say, I want to attend the county board meeting, and once we hit that number, whatever it is, say, I'm sorry, we're, we're full, and you'll have to attend it virtually.
I have to do that at ticket sales.
I don't believe we'd be able to turn anybody away. If you're going to allow people in, then you would risk that the reason you're not letting them in is because of the content of what they want to tell you. And so you should have a content-neutral policy, and by that I mean there's a fire code limit, or they're not. I don't think we could say, oh, you're the twelfth person, you don't get to come in. I don't think we could do that.
In that same vein, then you couldn't say, you're not wearing a mask, and you're not social distancing. Correct?
We certainly have the authority to require how people behave in our buildings, and if they are not wearing a mask, that would be a violation of our requirements, and we would ask them to leave.
And, and I just say that, Tim, because I know that schools in particular, you know, the first two-hundred-and-fifty people get into some of the events, and then after that, they're, they cut it off, so I, I'm not sure why we couldn't do something similar to that, but it's just an option.
I would like to ask, have someone researched that, why we couldn't? Because Doug is right about athletic events.
So the question is?
The question is, can we limit the number?
We want to still stay within the guidelines of the governor's orders, but yet maybe, you know, very seldom, I don't know what this would sit as far as the proper distancing and stuff, but very seldom do we have that many in attendance, I guess. It, it might carry us over until such time that we can get the okay to open up fully soon.
But I think that we're, we're also having to look at Planning Commission meetings, and I know there's times when they have a significant number of individuals who want to come in and attend or present, and so, go ahead, Commissioner Franzine.
We have quite a bit of room out there with a TV that they can be socially distancing, you know, not just in here, but outside here, and also be attending, and, and if someone wants to actually speak, I would think they would be allowed to come in and someone else go out, or there's, there's ways to work this out.
To Administrator Huo's point, though, if the meeting is held in the basement or up here, and it's after hours, Planning and zoning is generally in the evening, how do you control those entry points? Because if you leave the door open, there's no control, and the numbers can grow. And I'm just being the devil's advocate here, because I think that's a real possibility.
Well, I believe that if we really want to do something, there are ways to work it out. But, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna continue to harp on this. You know my position.
I just, I just see the community kind of opening up a little bit, and I think it would be, it would be worth our efforts to try to join that, and still maintain the, you know, the safety issues at hand, but and there might be other ways that we can do it, but I just hate to see us continue to sit back and keep everything on lockdown. And it sounds like we do have a couple options. Maybe we give them a try and see how it goes, and, and then monitor that and make decisions as we gradually do this, but.
I think the point that, that Administrator Huo has made with his notes that he's given us is that there still is access. We're not closed down. And so when we use that term "closed," it's, you know, you would assume that you couldn't get in that door if, if your life depended on it, and that's not exactly true, going down this list of our various departments. So I do think that we have access. We want to be careful how we message, what we are putting out here. So for me personally, I believe, similar to most of you, that Land Services should be opened. I don't have an issue with that. I do have an issue with Community Services and that vaccine clinic that's still going on over there, and I, I've been there and met the nurses and, and seen the number of people that come in there, and to have any kind of social distancing in that lobby would be difficult on vaccine days. So I, personally, I would, would have went for June first for them to consider what I would say is a hard opening. But if it's May first, if that's what people want to do, I, I won't die on that sword. And then the other buildings, if we continue with the access that people do have, I'm comfortable with that and with our meetings. I don't want to get into a battle where we have to decide that twelve people are allowed in here, and the thirteenth one shows up and we have to call a sheriff's deputy to have them removed. I don't want to get into that battle, and I certainly don't want to get into a battle where we have people that don't want to wear a mask for various reasons, and some have medical reasons, and some don't. But I don't want to get into that battle either in our boardroom. And to the third point, you know, if a meeting is held after hours and we can't control the entry points, I'm not sure how we would facilitate that without paying out some additional wages for somebody to monitor that door. That's just, that's my position. Commissioner Franzine?
We've got a public hearing coming up, and there are people, I found this out since we've put, gone out for public comment. There are a lot of people who don't have access to computers. So we are, in my opinion, keeping them from, from being part of the public comment if the only way they have is to attend by teams.
I believe they can come in by phone, can't they? So they, they do have access. They'd have to speak up so that they, we knew they wanted to speak, but that's no different than on Teams either.
A lot of people don't understand that at this point, and I don't know that, you know, it's because, it's because they haven't had the need to use it, so.
Well, I think then we need to do a better job of letting people know that they do have access to us in those means, and maybe that's something we need to reiterate prior to the meeting, the day of a meeting, so that people know, who are on the phone, know that they'll have to, when their opportunity to speak up is available to them. That's just my thought. I'm, I'm trying to be cautious and yet open up some of the services that we have. I still am skeptical about where we're going with the variants and, and all the other issues that we might have to face out there, so I just want to be cautious. So I think there's consensus here to open up Land Services. That's what I'm hearing.
Definitely.
And have, you know, there'd be somebody monitoring that entryway, if I understand Gary correct. And the other ones, I think there's the direction for Community Services, that, that one remains as it is. If people walk up, they'll be addressed and, and brought in. They can make an appointment by phone, and then there'll be the distance learning or whatever you call your services. And then there'll be the distance learning or whatever you call your services out in the community. That's what I'm hearing at this point. And that there would be, I'll let you guys decide on an opening date for Director Terry so she knows, is it May first? Is it, I said June first, but I
I don't think, I don't think we can set a date. I think setting a hard date, we, a lot of stuff can change between now and the next month.
So just leave it the way it is and we'll reconsider?
You feel comfortable that they've, they've got the bulk of the vaccine work done and, and that they, they're in a position to do that. And I, I know that they will as soon as, they're not going to remain closed forever. But just given everything that's going on over there, I, I would say let's give them that, that opportunity to determine when. And again, Land Services is just a different structure and, and it, there's more room. It's nothing against either building, but I think it's just better suited to allow people in the door.
Okay. I think that's the direction Administrator Huo. So our meetings will stay the way they are for all the different commissions out there for the time being. And we'll revisit this probably twenty-four hours from now. Anyway. And with that, I don't know that there's any other business. Anyone have anything? And I would say that we are adjourned.